Good evening, and we now reconvene the regular meeting for the Lompoc City Council for December 5th, 2023. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. Mr. Malave, did we have any reportable action from closed session?
Mayor and council, the city council met in closed session to discuss the two items on the agenda. The council had a discussion on both those items with staff, but there was no reportable action.
Thank you. Please join me along with Mr. Pastor Bernie Federman for our invocation, followed by the pledge.
Let us pray. Dear God, we gather together in a posture of gratitude for all that you've done for us, the blessings that you've provided, allowing us the gift of life itself, family, friends, neighbors around us. In this season, words come to mind like hope and peace and joy and love, and we blend our faith before you, to not only invite your presence into this meeting, but to invoke your grace upon our city and all who reside within it. We ask for your peace to be upon us. We ask for your strength to be upon us. And tonight, as we gather, I thank you for the positive things that are going on in our city, the progress that we are making, the new businesses that we welcome, and we pray for the success of those businesses and the existing businesses. We give thanks to you for the many great individuals, organizations, churches, and those who are helping others in this time of holiday season, and that they might experience hope, peace, joy, and a sense of love. We thank you for our mayor and council members, our city manager, our city employees, and those who serve us so well. And two names come to mind, Sergeants Henry Strong and Robert Dugan, who've recently been promoted to the new ranks of sergeant. They'll be honored tomorrow in this very room, as well as four brand-new officers joining the Lompoc Police Department, Officers Quavis, Espinoza, Rios Garcia, and Sheer. May they learn much in the time that they are allotted, and may they live and enjoy their lives and their careers as you keep them safe as they serve our community. We pray for tonight's meeting and the agenda before this council, and for those being honored and receiving certificates for their achievements, and also for the special council meeting tomorrow night. Give your wisdom and your grace to us. And Lord, may we use our influence and our privilege for the good of others and endeavor to raise the quality of life for ourselves, for our children, our neighbors, and our future. In your powerful name, we pray. Amen.
I see lots of students out here, so please join me in the pledge. Stand up. I want to hear you loud and proud. Here we go. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. All right. Well, I did give some certificates out last night to the Future for Lompoc Youth for the 2023 Career Readiness Academy graduates, so congratulations to all those high school students from Lompoc High and Maple that went through that program, and we're very proud of you. And tonight, I am happy to present certificates of recognition to all of the Lompoc Boys and Girls Club members who've achieved their Gold Card status. So what I'd like to do is invite Mr. Baker to come meet me at the podium, and then everybody who's receiving a certificate, I want you to come stand up against the dais here, stand in the semicircle. So all the students receiving a certificate, come stand right here, okay? Come on up. So I have a stack of names here, and I know not everybody could make it tonight, and maybe some of you are a little shy about getting up and standing up front, but what I want to do really quickly is run through the names, because I think it's really important for our community to hear that all of you have been successful in reaching Gold Card status. So I'm going to read out loud, and it's really about making a solid commitment to school attendance and all the extracurricular activity. And this commitment sets you up for long-term success, because it's good habits, right? Getting our homework done, attending school, because you know what happens when you're up here? There's a lot of reading, there's a lot of math, and there's a lot of public speaking. So you're starting out setting good habits, and I just want to say congratulations to us here at the council and all of the community. So I'm going to read the names, and if I read your name, just raise your hand, so we know that you're here, and for those that didn't make it, you'll still get your certificate. It'll be back at the Boys and Girls Club. We have Natalie Ariano, Yasmeer Beltran, Alexandria Berry, Jacqueline Berry, Ryan Beillick, Daniel Catticatur, Melody Catticatur, I'm sure I'm saying those names wrong, so Bodie Cruz, Marcelo Cortez, Mia Quavis, Angelique Earl, Eva Fonseca, Camila Garcia, Anthony Alexander Garcia Woods, Cheyenne Garza, Serenity Garza, Cindy Gaetan, Jake Gladden, Jacob Hernandez, Melanie Hernandez, Robert Hernandez, Jordan Herrera, Edgar Allen Higera, Aleah Hoffman, Caleb Lopez, Elijah Lopez, you guys are really testing my pronunciation skills, Jamison McMillan, Camila Medina, Miguel Mendez, Jordan Wesley Moreo, Callie Nicole Moreo, Alejandro Navarro, Jared Navarro, Andrew Ochoa, Malachi Perez, Audrey Plant, Miley Ramirez, Diego Rafael Ramirez-Luhan, Craig Speary, Christopher Steele, Kobaya Vetch, Octavio Villa, Abel Veray, Braylon Witt, Isaac Zamora, Mateo Zavala, Nevia Zamora, Ellie Zuniga. Awesome, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Baker, and I have the honor of being the CEO for United Boys and Girls Clubs, and this is one of our clubs in the county. And I want to recognize our outstanding club director, Bree. She's doing a wonderful job, Briann Morris, for everything you're doing. Thank you for everything you're doing. Let's give her a round of applause. The children that are here tonight, there's actually 48 children that have achieved Gold Card status, and let me explain to you exactly what that means, and I'll be brief, but I promise this is important to note. We know from studies of Boys and Girls Clubs all over the country, clubs have been around since 1860, we know that the magic number is 105 days. If we can get a child to attend a Boys and Girls Club 105 days in the same calendar year, they're twice as likely to graduate high school on time and twice as likely to lead a healthy lifestyle. And that's what we call our Gold Card status. So these children, all these children that are here and the others that aren't here tonight, have achieved Gold Card status, they've been participating in their clubs, and they're well on their way to leading a healthy lifestyle and certainly graduating on time. So let's give them another round of applause for making that happen. We'd love to get a photo opportunity, if we could, with the council, would that be possible?
Absolutely. Come on in, and we'll get our PIO to take a photo, but join in, and we'll sit behind them. That way, we're all in the photo. Yeah, any parent who wants to take a picture? Now's your time. Everybody got the photos they wanted? Okay, one more round of applause, and then you guys can you can return to your seats, and feel free to stay if you'd like to watch a council meeting, and if you don't want to watch it, I won't take offense for you departing. Thank you. I mean, that's why they got the Gold Card, is, you know. The Christmas break's almost here, but it's not here yet. All right. Thank you so very much for letting us honor our kids in the community. I think it's really important that they get an opportunity to be recognized every chance they get, and they do well. All right, Mr. City Manager, floor is yours for report.
All right, thank you. I wanted to invite everybody out. Tomorrow at 9:30 at Ryan Park, we'll be doing a ribbon cutting. We'll be celebrating the new pickleball courts, the tennis courts, and the playground equipment and fitness equipment as well, so encourage everybody to come out. I got a chance to go look at it today, and it looks pretty awesome. Tomorrow, we'll be having a special meeting here in council at 6:30 for the Space Park by Pale Blue Dot. I also want to invite everybody to, if they want to have the Santa guy around, kids hear me? Come and visit. We still are taking those at the Lompoc Rec, December 15th and 16th will be those dates. The Beautification and Appearance Commission is still accepting submissions by tomorrow for the holiday decorations, so if you have somebody for a home or business that you want to nominate, we still got time. Also wanted to let everybody know they're still raffling off mini Christmas trees at the library, so you have a chance to put your raffle tickets in there. I also want to thank everybody for coming out for the Christmas parade. We had a great participation issue, there was a lot of people there, and that was really awesome to see. I wanted to thank the Police Department, Rec Division, Utilities, and actually everybody in City Hall that participated in helping the event to come together, and they did a great job. I think we had 75 floats, and that being said, I wanted to recognize our Federal Correctional Complex for entering in their float. They got first place, I don't know if you got a chance to see, but it was pretty cool. It's good to see them come out and celebrate and be part of our community, so that's all I have, and thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar is items 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, and 3, so if you would like to speak on an item listed on the Consent Calendar, the floor is now open. You may either come to the podium for your three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if there are any calls or speakers, I'll read Consent Calendar into the process into the record. All items listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the Consent Calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one rise and no one call in, I will open the floor for either some questions, polling, or a motion. Councilmember Ball.
I'll make a motion to accept Consent Calendar.
All right.
I'll second.
And Councilmember Vega seconds it. We've had a motion and a second, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you. There are no staff presentations on the agenda, so we will go on to general oral communications. This is your opportunity to speak to items that are not on the agenda but are within the subject of our jurisdiction. You are welcome to come forward and speak for three minutes, or you may call in at Floor is now open.
Madam Mayor, City Council, so I first want to commend the mayor and city council for recognizing the groups that are striving to make this community better for our youth, because that is what we need. We need to give these kids something that they can believe in. Now, another thing, in the chief of police, in his report on the crime statistics, I failed to see that he mentioned, there was no mention of unsolved homicides within the community, so I think that needs to be brought up, that needs to be focused on, because their community, there are people in this community that are, they have no justice, they have no rest until whoever took their loved one's life can be brought to justice. And maybe bringing these unsolved homicides up within the community, within the reports, might generate some information that can bring closure to families. I, for one, would love to see just how many unsolved homicides there are within this department from, let's say, 2016 until now, and maybe periodically have a case brought up and, you know, hey, any information, any leads, because families deserve closure, they deserve justice, no matter the circumstances of how their loved ones died. I don't care if it's gang violence, I don't care if they were innocent, they were still taken unjustly, and I feel that families deserve to have some closure in their loved ones passing, and that maybe we can help close some cases if they're just brought up, brought to the surface again, and information was made public. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Sandy Healy, and I've been a resident of Lompoc since 1966. Mayor, council members, and concerned citizens of Lompoc, I'm here as president of the Board of Meals on Wheels of Lompoc. Fourteen months ago, Les Evans, our volunteer office manager and treasurer, gave his notice that he will be retiring on April 1st, 2024. Les has worked every day, Monday through Friday, and weekends, with no pay, for the last 12 and a half years. Thus far, we found no one to replace him. A few have volunteered a few hours a week, and one person has come in Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for maybe an hour or two, and she's the only one who knows all the elaborate computer programs that he has designed. If we can't replace Les, and Les recommends that we get two to three people, we may have to shut the program down. The Meals on Wheels program right now services about 105 clients. The meals are from the hospital, the clients pay $3.50 a meal, and some of them get it every day, some of them get it a couple days a week, but I know one person for sure who gets seven meals, two on Thursday and two on Friday, and it has memory issues, does not drive, she would be sorely affected. It takes five people every day to run that program, someone in the kitchen to put the meals in their containers, and four drivers. So not only do we need to replace Les, uh-oh, I got to move on, I got to walk. So we've talked to other Meals on Wheels programs, we have a listing with AmeriCorps, we've looked into grants locally and with Meals on Wheels America, but nothing has materialized for us. We don't qualify for the Community Block Grants because of the Spanish issue. So no grants, if we have to pay someone, no person to train, and maybe someone out there knows something or somebody that might help us out. Thank you for your time.
Sandy, before you walk away, is there a contact phone number that you'd like to provide while you have the microphone to the public?
I put my phone number there, and then there is Meals on Wheels, I can give you that.
Yeah, I'll let you, even if the time ends up
It's critical, and we may, yeah, thank you.
Even if your time expires, if you have the Meals on Wheels phone number and you want to give it out if anybody's interested.
All right, the Meals on Wheels number is 805-736-3257. We have a little office in the back, in the alley in the back of the Lowark building.
Okay. So I just think while you have the microphone and you're making the appeal, it helps to add the number rather than them trying to
I don't know, I don't know what we'll do. We've got four months.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Hello, good evening. My name is Marcia Wertz, and I'm just here tonight because I'd like to just touch briefly on the subject of leaf blowers here in anywhere, but specifically within Lompoc and our residential areas. Of recent, and on a number of occasions, I have had to contact the city of Lompoc to file complaints because of leaf blower, city employees using leaf blowers and not affecting the airspace by blowing up debris and causing kind of an environmental concern. So just a couple of those dates you could, city personnel could look for would be September 19th and recently, December 1st, where there were students sitting nearby, like sitting, waiting for a bus in front of the rec department, for example, and the city using leaf blowers and just blowing, not just leaves around, but it would, it blows the small dust and debris as well. So I found this information, it's a quote from a letter that is sent to the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors from their local Sierra Club chapter, their county group, regarding particulates, toxins, and carcinogens. Pollution generated by leaf blowers is not limited to direct emissions. All leaf blowers, whether gas-powered or electric, remain highly polluted due to the toxic substances they project, disperse, and cause to be airborne. The machines kick up a potent mix of toxins, including brake dust, rubber tire particles, pesticides, herbicides, fecal matter molds, diesel soot, and a long list of carcinogens that are directly inhaled by people with a substantial, within a substantial radius, and of course, by the operators themselves. The potentially deadly health impacts of particulate pollution in paved urban environments are dramatically increased when particulates are stirred up by the hurricane-force winds that leaf blowers emit. In sum, it is not merely high emissions that make leaf blowers an exceptionally pollutive technology, it is the volume and variety of pollutants that they project, disperse, and force on the human respiratory system. If one were to go to our local, it's an online, for the Santa Barbara County APCD, it's an air pollution, the Air Pollution Control District, that's our, kind of our local oversight. They have a number of tips for the use of leaf blowers. Be considerate, be a considerate neighbor, ask your neighbors if they are being impacted. Remember, in warm weather, they, many like to leave their windows open, and the dust can blow into their homes. Avoid blowing dust within 50 feet in any direction of pedestrians, pets, or other neighboring property. Use an alternative to leaf blowers, such as gentle sweeping with a push broom, followed by light hosing with water, et cetera, shop vac, et cetera. Be aware of wind direction, and alert your landscaping services to these issues. Basically, set your leaf blowers at the lowest intensity for the job, and avoid blowing dust, leaves, weeds, and other debris into the air, because this is an environmental impact that affects all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little nervous, so sorry. Good evening, Ms. Mayor, city council members and staff. My name is Darlene Villanueva. I am a licensed esthetician specializing in oncology skincare. I opened up my small new business because I felt there was a need in our community to learn and advocate for better skin health. I've come here to, I've come here tonight to ask if the city of Lompoc has incentives for small business owners like mine, as we establish ourselves particularly during the first and second year. As you may know, offering incentives brings new jobs, increases commerce, improves property values, increases tax receipts, brings cultural diversity, and revitalizes opportunities. Some incentives the city could offer is a reduced utility bill for the first year, funding to support with the remodeling of our commercial spaces, or a get-ready fire inspection package, which would include fire extinguishers, fire detectors, and exit signs. These are only some ideas to support new business owners, and the city of Lompoc could consider as it will benefit us all. Please let me know who, how we can move this forward and offer incentives if there are none, if there are none. So how can we have more incentives for small business owners? When I opened up my business, I didn't know the financial hardship. I'm struggling and striving. It's very hard to open a business in the city of Lompoc. I use two portables, I don't even use water, and I get billed for it. I fill up a five, less than a five-gallon trash bag each month. So these incentives would come in really handy for small businesses. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we will close oral communications. For public response to the last question, I would say, reach out to our Chamber of Commerce, they have a list of resources that you can utilize. There's the Small Business Association. Currently, we have not set aside incentives because of tight budgets, but we appreciate the information you've shared, and I'm sure in future budgets, we might be able to consider them. But do reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, they have a list of resources, as well as the Small Business Association. They do have resources that may assist you on some things right now. Okay? All right. All right, bringing it back to the agenda, our next item is item number four, council appointment for the Airport Commission. We currently have one applicant, Ron Randrup, and we have four open positions. We have three at-large appointments ending 1/2024, and one at-large appointment term ending 1/2025, so I would entertain a motion and include which term you would like to make the appointment for. Councilmember Ball.
So I'd be honored to nominate Mr. Ron Randrup for the one-at-large appointment that ends in 2025.
Great, all right. May I have a second? I'll give him a second.
A second.
All right, we'll let Councilmember Starbuck have that second. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. For the public, if you're interested in serving, there are still three positions open. I believe they need one more person to make a quorum to meet, because currently, they're still shy of having enough to make a quorum to meet, so just wanted that to be publicly informed.
And just to confirm, that's not necessarily district-based, right?
That is not, yeah, that is the only commission we have left, except for the Youth Commission, because we don't have the Senior Commission anymore, which used to allow outside. Yeah, so it's one of the few that if you live within the 93436, you can apply. You don't have to be inside the city limits, so you are correct. Okay. All right, the big event for the evening is item number five, it's our public hearing, a public hearing to review the Master Fee Study Update Report and Adoption of Resolution Number 6 and Adoption of Resolution Number 6620, parentheses 23, updating the schedule of fees and charges for city services. We have Kristi Donnelly, our Management Services Director and Consultant, to make the presentation and then we will begin the process.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Public, and Staff. So tonight, we've got a big agenda with the Cost of Services Study. Thank you all for coming and I just want to just review really quickly kind of how we've gotten to this point. To start with, our last user fee analysis was adopted in January of 2016 and those fees were updated in September of 2018. We contracted with revenue and cost specialists again in early 2020 to start a new study. Well, that was great timing. We had had a little bit of a hiccup with the pandemic and so this has taken a little bit longer to get back to council and to be reviewed, but here we are and we're excited. Notice of this public hearing was posted in the Lompoc Record on November 15th and November 22nd as required. And I just want to start, we're going to start tonight with a presentation by our consultant, who I'll introduce here in a moment. Once he is done with the presentation, we're going to attempt to go through this page by page. And you should have received this handout. This is, aligns with the PDF that you each were emailed and that is available online as well. These are available in the lobby area as well, so if anyone in the public wants to follow along. We're going to try to go through these page by page. There are 34 pages. There's between five and eight on each page, so there's quite a few to go through. What I, what we're going to need to decide, and we can discuss this after the presentation, is at what points we want to stop for public comment. I think that a good suggestion is to stop at the end of each category. So pages one to 11 are Development Services, 12 to 15 is Public Works, and it goes on and on. But we could do it more frequently or less frequently and that really is up to council to let us know how we want to do that. There have been two updates to the Cost Services Study since it was noticed and those are highlighted on this handout, which is also in the lobby. And they were just additional information on cannabis business review so that we can move that into a renewal fee rather than a charge by cost item and then a revision on the bid award protest review and we'll get into each of those as we go along. I just wanted you to have the specific update information. So we will try to get through all of these tonight, but we can continue the public hearing if it gets to be too late. And we'll keep an eye on the clock. I'm not sure at what point we may want to take a break, but we, I know that if we're going until, who knows, I'll need a break. So anyway, now I would like to introduce Eric Johnson. He is the President of Revenue and Cost Specialists. He's going to give us the presentation and then lead us through the public hearing. Eric, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, Kristi. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Eric Johnson from Revenue and Cost Specialists and glad to be here tonight to go through this Cost of Services Study. Before we get into it, a little background on Revenue and Cost Specialists, we were founded in 1980 with the passage of Proposition 13 and Proposition 4 where cities realized they were going to need to have this information. Oh, dramatic. And I've been doing this since 1990, so in those ensuing 34 years, I've worked with over 100 different agencies, mostly in California, but across the country. So what we did is, or I should say, the last time we did this was in 2018. We started this in 2020 as Kristi mentioned and things got delayed with the pandemic, but we persevered and completed the report and so we have the report that you see here in front of you. So really what we did with this study is we applied a business model of costing. What does a cost provide services to your customers? Governmental accounting isn't really designed to do that. It tells you very, very well how much a fund costs or how much a department or division costs, but it doesn't tell you how much a service costs. So that's that process that we had to go through to develop those numbers from the city's budget, uh, numbers. So in here, you won't see a city council service, you won't see a city manager service. Those costs are part of the cost of the positions and the costs that are providing services to your customers, to the public. It's just like when you go to the grocery store and you buy a can of corn. You know when you buy that can of corn, that includes the farmer and the distributor and the trucker and the person stocking the shelves and the checker in front of you. You know that. We've done that same thing here. We've identified what are the support costs, what are the direct costs, and therefore here is the cost of the service. As a business, you wouldn't stay in business very long if you didn't know these numbers. So we've developed that as part of this process that we perform for the city. So how did we do it? Well, first off, as part of this, we identified almost 200 different services that we'll be going through most of these here tonight. And so we should keep track of these as we're going through each one. So how did we do this? The bulk of the services that are being provided by the city to its customers, to the public, are personnel cost, your service industry. So the first thing we need to do is identify what are the services we want to take a look at? Who's spending time on them? How much time are they spending? And how many of these are you doing? And so we started with the data from 2018 and we updated that. There's, it's been a few years, processes have changed. We spent many hours with staff, eventually on Zoom as we all figured out where our microphones and cameras were at, and went through that over and over again with staff. And I really want to thank staff for the time and effort they put into this, working with me on this. And we wanted to identify what 100% of the staff time is spent doing something, whether it's on a service being provided to the public, whether it's fee supported or not, or a service that's support of the other parts of the organization. Someone's doing something all the time. And so we went through that process. And by looking at 100% of the cost, it gives us a check on our data. So as we add up, the planner spends this much time on a conditional use permit and there's 12 of them. They spend this much time on home occupation permit. When we add all that up, we then review that with staff. We've allocated out 50% of the planner when we add everything up, sit down with staff. Does that make sense? If it does, great. What else are they spending time on? Where do they have advanced planning time? They spend time at the counter. We have our weekly staff meeting to make sure that we have 100% data that makes sense. If we come back and we've allocated out 150%, okay, we know we've got a problem. So we go back to make sure that we have data that is defensible. Once we have that accurate data, we develop a fully burdened hourly rate for every position in the city. Their salaries, their fringe benefits, the direct, the general operating expenses within each department or division. And then there's the citywide cost allocation plan that the city calculates. Use those costs for the general administrative costs, city council, city manager, finance, HR, those support costs that you need to be able to do your job. Departmental overhead where it makes sense, so that we have a fully burdened hourly rate for every employee, every position in the city. We mashed that up with the time data. Now we know what each service costs, the fully allocated cost, the business cost of each service. We then sit down with staff again and say, here's your current fee, here's the cost, and here's the proposed fee to, in most cases, recover 100% of those costs. And we review that with staff to make sure that the current data still makes sense and that what we're proposing is something that if the council were to approve these fees, it's something that makes sense at the counter that they could then use and apply. Which brings us here today where we have the final report. We have a summary identifying what's the fiscal impact. We'll talk tonight about what changes we want to make, but at the end of the day, this is a policy discussion. These costs are occurring. Question is who's going to pay for them? The taxpayer or the person receiving the service? So that's the discussion that you all, that's the decisions you all have to make as a council. So I talk about tax services versus fee services. Community-supported services versus what we call personal choice services. Community-supported services, those things that typically benefit the community as a whole. Police patrol, fire suppression, park maintenance, street maintenance. Those things when people say, what do my tax dollars pay for? This is what their tax dollars pay for. They can't, you can't fund it any other way. Personal choice services, the customer is identifiable, the service is measurable. Most importantly, it benefits an individual or a group and not the broader community. You can still choose to subsidize. You can't charge more than what we've identified as the full cost because that overage then becomes a tax, but you can charge less than that should you decide to. Examples of this are development services, planning applications, building permits. Another way to look at this is I'm kind of a picture person myself is you got the two circles at the top there, fees and charges, taxes, general fund taxes. And California local government, those are kind of your big broad revenue sources. Fees and charges are designed to support personal choice services. Taxes are designed to support community-supported services. But to the extent that the fee doesn't cover the cost of the personal choice service, the cost is, the service is still being provided. The cost is occurring. The question is, the only place that support can come from is taxes. So you have this subsidy of tax dollars to support what we've defined as personal choice services. And it's through this process, we identified about $4.3 million in annual subsidy. Now, we don't think that if you took every recommendation in this report, you would get $4.3 million a year. There are certain services in here that are going to continue to be subsidized. Leisure and cultural services, recreation services is an example of service that will most likely continue to be subsidized. We've also identified costs for police public disturbance response, police false alarm response. They're designed to recover costs, but at the end of the day, they're designed to have it so people don't pay it. If you, if we have to come back out again, you're going to pay a fee. So hopefully, most people make them so they don't come back out again. Booking processing, it's just very difficult to get the money out of the people you book. And so that's one where it's a big subsidy and we have a fee for it, but you're probably not going to get much revenue. And there's certain fees in here that are subsidized by, because of state law. You can't charge more than a certain amount. Concealed weapons permit is an example of that. So we think if every recommendation was adopted in this report, the city would get about $1.37 million per year in additional cost recovery. So you still have about a $2.9 million subsidy, bulk of that coming from recreation service subsidies. But that you would lower the amount of tax support that is being used to support these personal choice services. Now, why did we do this? Why did we go through this whole process? Because voters told us to. In 1979, they passed Proposition 4, just in the wake of Prop 13 the year before, which identified service fees as being limited to the cost of providing the service and also set up an exemption for use of public property, use of facilities, rental of facilities or parks. Proposition 218 in 1996 placed limits on the creation and updates of property-related fees, assessment fees typically. And Prop 26 in 2010 codified these existing fee-setting practices of not exceeding the cost reasonably borne and fees are different than taxes in Article 13(c) of the state constitution. So all these things are, voters are telling us to act more like a business. Know what your costs are. You can still make policy from that, but have that be an informed decision based on actual data. So this was a comprehensive report. We looked at every service in the city. We wanted to improve cost recovery. We certainly looked at adding, removing, redefining fees. Want to make sure they're legally defensible. In some cases, we looked at what's the revenue being collected in certain areas. And in the case of recreation fees, there's a market demand component. And if you're someone who likes to count things like I do, we identified 195 different services. 28 of them are new, which is a large number for new fees. 105 of these fees increased because the cost increased. Five were restructured. 42 had no change. In some cases, it's because of legal limit or market sensitivity. 12 fees actually decreased because we were showing the cost was now less than what the current fee was. So you have, you have to lower those fees. If you do nothing else, you have to lower those fees. And three fees were deleted as no longer being relevant fees. So as I mentioned, the fiscal impact, about $1.37 million annually in increased cost recovery if all the recommendations in here are approved. Because again, the costs are occurring. The question now is who's going to pay for it? The taxpayer or the person receiving that service? The report itself is quite lengthy, a lot of detail in it. It starts with some explanatory text and some summary schedules at the beginning. Appendix A following that shows every fee, the current fee and the proposed fee. For each of those fee services, each of those S numbers, service numbers, there are two matching pages in Appendix B. The current fee, proposed fee, the cost detail on the right-hand page showing which positions are involved in every service. How much time are they spending? How many, how many of these are the city, is the city doing every year? That's all in Appendix B. And also, it's not on the slide, but Appendix C has the detail of the changes we're proposing for the building and safety fees and Appendix D has the detail we're proposing for the fire fees. We recommend these studies be performed every four to five years. Processes change. Who's doing, certain processes change. We have made recommendations based on what we feel is the best practice in our legally defensible fees, but it's now up to you as a city council to decide which services should be charged the full cost and which services should be subsidized with tax dollars. So that concludes my presentation. Certainly, before we get into the detail, I want to see if there was any general questions that the council had.
Thank you for that. Any general process questions for the consultant? Councilmember Ball.
Just real quick, just to confirm as you're doing this, this isn't necessarily a measurement or a study on efficiency. It's just cost. Maybe you can elaborate on.
That is correct. We're not telling the city, we're not telling staff how they should be doing things. We just want to know how much time it takes them to do it.
Is it within your purview to share, I mean, obviously you work with many different cities and they all come up with random costs for things and services. Are we in line with most cities in terms of what, you know, where, how far behind we are or what we, you might suggest we consider doing here tonight?
Yeah, I didn't see anything that jumped out. Certainly as we're going through, if I see something that is way very much different than what I typically see for provision of the service, I'll bring that up and we'll talk about it. I did not see that here. And so it was pretty, you know, every city does things differently, as you mentioned, but I didn't see anything that jumped out as, wow, I can't believe you guys are doing that.
For most of the average cities that you've worked with, they're all faced with the same decision. Do we do 100% cost recovery or do we subsidize? With where we are as a city, where do we align with the average city out there?
You're doing relatively well. You went through this process before. There was a lot of hard decisions made by this council in 2018. And so that means there isn't as, there aren't as many big changes as there was in 2018. And so this is kind of more of a, kind of going in for your update with the doctor. You know, what are some minor changes I need to make? What do I need to be doing better? This is that kind of thing. Here's our five-year update. Let's get these back to, okay, now we're good. We can go forward for the next five years with maybe some CPI increases in between. But if we, for instance, some cities will wait 10 years, sometimes longer in between updates. And they have harder decisions to make because they have a lot of fees that are doubling and tripling because they, their fees haven't kept up with the rising costs.
I appreciate all that. I think something I'll be curious, I'm not sure you have an answer for that, but if we've only done this in 2018, which isn't that long ago, five years ago, it is interesting that, I'm curious what the actions were at that point, considering that we're faced with doing some significant increases only five years later. So just curious.
All right, so I don't see any more questions from the consultant in the moment, but stick around. I'm sure they'll crop up. I do believe that Ms. Donnelly suggested that we break them down into sections and I think that's a good proposal given the number. So if we take the community development and have a discussion and then make any edits and then approve the group and we go through each, what I call, counted was about six groups. And then at the end of that, at the end of each one of those, we'll have public comment and then we'll make a motion and adopt each section. And then we'll have one final public comment at the end of all of that and then bring it back for a full final vote on adopting the entire document with any changes and the resolution. the resolution. Is everyone agreeable with that process? If it goes on quite a while, I will call for a break, or if anybody wants to cry uncle, don't hesitate to say it'd be nice to have a break after we finish this item. Don't hesitate to do that. And I see the city attorney waving at me, so Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Since this is a formal public hearing, I suggest that you just open the public hearing now, and then it'll stay open through all the little, the segmented public comment periods.
Okay.
And we can close it at the very end.
Okay. All right. So we will officially open the public hearing, and we'll begin with the community development section, and then call for public comment after that presentation.
And I just did want to note that the color coding on the spreadsheet, under the percent unit change, it's, it's either positive or negative, fees going up, fees going down. If it, if it had a large change, more than 100% change, there'd be a red for that cell. If it, the cost is going down or the fee is going down, there would be a negative number there. I'm sorry, a green, that would be color-coded green. And then off to the right there, the, the number of units and the possible new revenue. Just to kind of give you all an idea of kind of scope and scale, is this something we do? One of these every five years and we're, it's not that big a deal? Or we do 200 of these and it is a big deal? But you'll see the, the number of units there, those are the annual number of occurrences for each of these. If it is color-coded red off to the right, that means the, you're losing revenue because the fee's going down. If it's color-coded green, that means there's a larger increase, more than $25,000 increase in the total annual revenue for that service. So just kind of trying to point out things that kind of move the needle a little bit more. And then also, under the service title, those that are highlighted in yellow are new proposed fees.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, before we start all this, I got to ask, why do you list a fee? I'll, I'll look at adult business. You, you, current fee's 360 plus a $1,000 deposit. You suggest going to 285 plus a $2,000 deposit. So why don't we make that fee 2,285? Because we know if that money's hanging there, staff's going to gobble it up. Why do we need to put a deposit in when you've already listed a fee?
What we're trying to do with, with that particular fee, and there's a couple of others that are similar to that, the, that base fee is certain staff that, that, it's a process part of the, of the application. So their time doesn't vary. That's, that's pretty set. The deposit part is their staff and consultant, but it could take a widely varying amount of time. It could be something that could only cost $500, or it could cost more than $2,000. And so instead of, because it's such a wide range, instead of coming up with an average that really hurts the, the smaller one or the one that does it right, this is something that, the method that we came up with that, or was there before that we updated.
Yeah, that's what I think is kind of wrong here because it's, I read it as a, you know, $2,285 fee. That's what you're coughing up when you walk to the counter.
That, that is what you're having to pay, but with the other $2,000, staff has to track their time, identify how much time they spent, and if it, if it ends up being less than that $2,000, they would get that money back.
It never is.
All right. Any other, I, I see Christie trying to, to say something.
I just, I just wanted to speak to that, the deposit, a little bit. We are required to hold all deposits in separate accounts and track those deposits, the ins and the outs of those. They are reported as deposits on our financial statements.
And so one way we can go through this review is, on each page, is there anything that council has, any of the council members have a question about, have an issue with, have a problem with, and kind of deal with by exception, so we don't have to go through each and every row? It's up to you, of course.
That is very helpful. All right. So, page one begins the development services, and so I'll open it to council for any concerns or issues with numbers on page one. Councilmember Ball?
I think these are, and again, I don't, I mean, I know the cost has gone up, and I know we've got to make some adjustments here, but I think I'd like to hear a little bit more. You know, again, I, we're hopeful that everyone that comes in here understands that it costs more to do business, and they all pony up and they pay, and that we see that revenue. But there is a good argument to say, at some point, you might have some people that decide, well, that's prohibitive, or it's a deterrent from me, you know, pursuing the project because of the cost. So, again, I'm looking for a little bit, I understand that we need to do this, most of this, we need to make the adjustment, but it is kind of a moving target. It's up to us to determine how much we subsidize. So I'm just curious how the city or how you might feel that, you know, again, I agree, if someone coming in and it used to be $1,300 and now it's $2,800, there's going to be some sticker shock there. But that's the cost of doing business, and things change. But I'm curious, are we shooting ourselves in the foot by saying, oh, yeah, the cost has gone up? But then we don't have people following the permit laws as closely as they should, et cetera, et cetera. Maybe you can elaborate, or someone from the city can talk about that.
Or just, let me say something first. Typically, as a rule, you know, obviously, every development's different, every applicant's different, and have different means. Some applicants are larger, some are smaller. But these fees, as a rule, don't, are a small percentage of the overall cost of a project. These aren't capital fees, which may have more of an impact. These are relatively small fees. And so typically, people aren't deciding whether to build in Long Poak or do business in Long Poak because they're paying an extra $500,000, because they're paying $5,000 instead of $4,000. These are typically, these fees don't move the needle.
Sure. And I, I can respect that. I think my only pushback is that this is a town, and we have many small business owners, and $2,000 is not insignificant to them, as they're figuring out how to get a CUP to actually get the doors open and make some revenue and actually pay their taxes and help our city. So, again, I'm, I'm still kind of in the middle there.
At, at the end of the day, that's why you guys get paid the big bucks, to make those decisions. Because if you are subsidized, using your tax dollars to subsidize some of these services, that's less money you have to spend on other things. And so these decisions aren't being made in a vacuum, and they're hard decisions. You know, someone's, someone's paying for it, one way or the other, and who should it be?
Did anyone have hearing nothing on page one? Anything on page two? Councilmember Vega?
Mayor, is there a way that we can move this process in a way?
Sure. We can take the chat.
Do this without, no, no, without us reviewing but not stopping for every little question, so we're never going to get through this.
I'm happy to go with the whole section. So do you have anything?
Is there a way that you can maybe expedite a little bit easier?
Yeah. So do you have anything in the community development section that you want to discuss?
I'm good right now.
Because we're going to talk about the community development fees first, open it for public comment, and then come back and, and make any changes and vote on that.
Yeah, I think that probably if we stop for every little question here, we'll be here. And we're going to lose interest here, so I'd like to have people engaged and paying attention.
That's fine. I just, I'm looking for feedback from council. Councilmember Starbuck, you kind of turned your light on, it didn't stay on, but I saw you push it.
Well, I'm kind of in a question about a lot of these. I'm here on page eight, and I'm looking at the sign program review, and we're looking at lowering that to 530 for an application, for a sign review. Years ago, we started what we called the DRB, Developmental Review Board, where we had the staff, we brought the applicants in for these projects, they all sat, and this was an economic increase. What we were trying to do at that time was to save people the hassle of going through each one of these individually. Things like signs, setbacks, any problems that we're going to encounter in their projects was supposed to be covered. I don't see DRB listed here. That's good, because it was never a fee when it was established. It was to help businesses. Now I understand we're charging quite a bit of money to hold a developmental review board, and we have these supplemental little things in here that were supposed to be covered by the DRB.
So I would ask the development division to answer that question for you. You're welcome to come to the microphone.
Mayor, members, members of the council, I just want to clarify a couple of things. So the, the DAT or the Development Assistance Team, we still have that. I don't feel like it's been very successful because not a lot of people have been attending as far as applicants and coming up with projects that they want to discuss, but it's still available. We still meet every two months. So there's no fee for that. It is a great thing, not a lot of people are taking advantage of it. Maybe we need to maybe market it or bring it up a little bit more. But we don't get very many applicants that come in that want to talk about a project. They usually just come to the counter, or they do our pre-application. The pre-application is in your fees tonight, so you can take a look at that. So the Development Review Board that you're talking about, that fee, for example, let's say someone submits a conditional use permit. We go to that meeting with all the different departments, and that's part of that fee. We would bill them for the hour that we're there discussing the project and discussing the conditions on the project, but that's, that's part of that, that fee is the Development Review Board.
Good. Where's that listed at in here?
That, that's not a fee, it's just, it's part of-
It's one that we've imposed on ourselves. What does that cost now, for an hour, for everybody to sit down and tell somebody what he's got to do? What does it cost now for a DRB?
That's a really good question. There's usually at least a couple planners, myself, and then the person who's been assigned to that project. So it could-
Brian, is design review S003, is that the fee that Councilmember Starbuck is referencing?
Not exactly, because it's different. That's the permit. The Design Review Board is just basically, before it goes to a hearing, everybody sits around in a room.
Yeah, now, everybody being pretty much the people that are going to sign off on this project. I'm just curious, what the, what the applicant pays to have all you guys sit around and tell him what he's doing wrong?
Well, it's based on an hourly rate. So our, our hourly rates are posted and available, so whatever that is, we would assign that hourly rate.
So that should be part of this.
And then we would charge them. It is.
It's a fee we're charging, but this is one that we're not charging through our fee schedule. This is one we're doing on our own, then.
No. So the deposit that, that Eric was speaking about, that's part of the deposit, and then we would bill against the deposit. We do monthly bills for the project that goes to the applicant, they pay it.
Yeah, well, that's, he's going to one DRB.
Yeah.
He brings his plans, and then he sits around, and we have fire, we have police, we have every-
But, but not each department, I'm sorry to interrupt, but not each department is, is billing them. That's part of that one deposit that was, that was brought up earlier in the meeting. So that would be part of that deposit.
But where is that deposit listed?
It, it's in there. For example, we, I think one was mentioned in earlier, like $2,500 was one of them we spoke about.
I mean, I see design review.
The minor use permit talks about a $2,000 deposit. It was a $1,000 deposit. So those are the deposits that we're referring to, that they would pay. There's no DRB. So I think there's confusion regarding design review versus the Development Review Board.
Right. Well, I'm trying to clarify the confusion here, so.
So is, is the clarification that it depends on what type of permit you're applying for? When you, if you want to apply for a design review permit, you pay the deposit for a design review permit, and then the DRB meeting fee is deducted from that?
Correct. No, it's not deducted, we would simply do a monthly billing as part of that meeting, whatever, were there an hour?
We bill whatever we feel we spent on that time. Because I, I mean, you're looking here at a design review. This application's going to cost you $3,320 for design review.
Correct.
Yeah. I'm just, I see, I see satellites outside of what this paper has.
So for clarity, they pay the deposit, they have the Design Review Board meeting, and instead of being billed by the individual departments, they're billed for the single hour that all of them got together to give the feedback as part of that deposit?
There's usually just a few departments. There's a, a planning, the planning division, there's the fire division, engineering, so all those are deposits, and basically you bill against those deposits. Now, if the applicant pays the bill every month, that deposit, you know, stays there. And at the end of the project, if they are, they are all paid up, they're in good standing with the city, that deposit is actually given back because they have been paying their, their monthly bills on their project.
Does that help?
No, I understand this, but it's a fee.
The deposit is a fee, yes.
And we are doing a, stay with me, a fee study, right? So this is a fee that's not listed in the fee study?
It's, it's incorporated, I'll let him explain, but it is incorporated in there. It's, it's part of the cost of these other services, that a CUP involves a DRB hearing. So when we identify the, the fee for a CUP, part of that fee is the DRB meeting. So there's no separate DRB.
I follow. So what we've done is, we've taken this item here, and this item here, and this item here, all of this in community development, and we combined it, and that's what the fee's going to be now.
Well, it's different processes. So there was never a DRB fee. It's a process that's part of, you know-
So we shouldn't charge for a DRB since we don't have a fee?
Well, that, at the end of the day, we're saying this is the cost of providing this service. This is the cost of this application. Part of that cost is for a CUP, the time spent on a planning commission staff report. Part of it's spent at planning commission hearing. Part of it may be spent on a site visit. Part of it's spent at a DRB meeting. All of those add up to become-
So it's done at staff's discretion, what they're going to charge for the fee. It's not in a fee schedule?
It is in the fee schedule, Councilmember Starbuck. I, in kind of hearing your question, if you go to page 59 for the conditional use permit, and if I'm following correctly, because it is confusing, and you look at the-
Hold on, mine only goes to 33.
I think she means 59 of the full fee study.
That's where I'm going now.
Yeah. And maybe Eric can, if I'm understanding correctly, that's the amount of time of each of those positions in those various departments that go into reviewing and preparing and getting a conditional permit ready to issue.
So what I'm, I'm seeing here, then, is that the Development Review Board's going to cost you $5,055.29.
No, a conditional use permit is going to cost $5,000. A DR, Development Review Board is part of that.
It's part of it.
Part of that, then. So, you know, you're looking for a conditional use permit, it's still $5,000.
Yeah, we identified-
We still don't know what the Developmental Review Board's going to cost.
It's a portion, it would be a portion of that. So those positions in there, a portion of that time identified is spent in DRB. And, and I just want to remind, because I feel like no one's saying it, and so slap me a, slap my hand if I'm not supposed to say this, Dean. But this is to be 100% cost recovery. We haven't been that on a lot of our fees. And so we've been subsidizing a lot of these fees. So that's the decision tonight, is how much do you want to continue to subsidize? This is what it's costing you for us to do it. We're not saying, charge that. If you want to, great. If you don't, don't. Charge less. But that's your decision to make.
With the caveat that, you know, it's being subsidized by tax dollars.
By the tax dollars that come away from public safety, parks, streets, and the library. Okay. So upon Councilmember Vega's request, the development services of the addition, of the, the, just the numbers handout is page one through 10, and 11, one through 11. I went through and found my highlighted separations, just so you know. So, right now, we're talking about any fees in page one through 11 that you might want to not have at 100% cost recovery, or if they aren't set at 100% currently, if you want to move them down or up, or have any questions on them. So it's, of the, the simplified version of just the fee structures, it's page one through 11 that we're looking at. So if you have any questions or concerns, or want to make any changes to that section, Don't have any, okay, Councilmember Starbuck?
All right, just a couple of small things here, then. Why, I, I'd like to get rid of the, of paying to appeal to the planning commission on this and city council. I, I mean, it, it's an appeal. Pardon? I don't know, it looks like 10 here, 10. But, you know, the very bottom, you know, $495 to have something heard by, you know, a jury of your peers, so to speak. It's, I get it, it takes staff time to put together an appeal, et cetera, et cetera. But, I mean, th- this is recouping money off of the back of somebody that obviously has an issue. I was curious about the address change too. You know, $395 to change your address, the post office does it for free.
There, there's a process they have to go through to make sure the number fits in with what's there, update the public safety databases, notify the post office.
Like somebody made up their address.
Well, it's, sometimes they'll come in, we want it to be 5,000 because that's my lucky number, but you live on 101 Main Street.
So, currently being proposed is a... $493 and...
$495 is the proposed fee.
Okay.
Current fee is 257.
It's 258.
258.
Yeah, okay, 258.
I have it highlighted up on the screen.
Oh, thank you for that. That, that is very helpful because they get blurred very close together even though it's the last one. All right, so, council feedback on potentially waiving the fee or if you don't want to waive the fee, if you'd like to reduce it? Councilmember Ball?
So, I, I, I tend to be in agreement with Councilmember Starbuck. Am I to read that right on the right-hand side where it says the 1 and the 2? Is that the amount of times on average it might happen in a year or is that, is that right? So, it's, it's, doesn't happen that often, but I, I agree. I, I think we should, I think we should be an open and listening body here. And on occasion, there may be a, a reason to hear someone's request and to charge them is, it, I don't know, it just seems, yeah. So, I agree with Councilmember Starbuck on that.
If, if I could bring up, sometimes if the fee is nothing, it doesn't cost anyone to appeal. I don't like what the, the Community Development Director said, so I'm going to appeal. I, I don't have a case, but it didn't cost me anything. You're currently charging 258. So, one option is to just leave the fee unchanged.
Councilmember Vega and then we'll go back to Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, I, I tend to keep it lower the fee, but maybe the same fee that we're charging right now keeps us on base. But instead of the increase, I think would be probably my direction here. You know, we could say zero, but then again, there is a time issue and we want someone to be held accountable. So, maybe there should be something there that says, hey, it's kind of like making an appointment, saying, we're coming here, we are serious, we're willing to put something out here. So, my proposal would be to leave the fee that is currently being charged right now instead of the increase.
I could be okay with that, yeah.
Councilmember Ball?
I, I, I don't have a problem with that. Yeah, I'd hate to have us, you know, four appeals every meeting just because, but...
There is that risk if there's no, I appreciate the consultant bringing that up, so I didn't have to, but that is the risk. So, I would be willing to support keeping the fee at what it is instead of an increase rather than completely waiving it. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, okay, I'm going to go ahead and go to page 11, our last one, the proposed new fees. We're proposing to go ahead and do a, a general plan maintenance fee. Now, read that. 5% of all building fees, including issuance, you go through the list. Moving right on down, we're going to call the next one, Community Development Technology, 10% of all building fees. Now, this is on top of all the fees you already pay. You look at those numbers in here, you're looking at what, unit cost, about $100,000 that supposedly we're subsidizing? Take a look at that for a new fee and if you were coming in here to build something.
So, the 5% fee is a current fee for the general plan maintenance. So, that's money that's set aside to help the city when it needs to do a general plan update to help subsidize that cost from the development community. The other one is a new fee, it's an additional 10% on top of every building fee, so not every planning fee. But, your building plan check and permit fees would have an additional 10% on top of that and that money's to be set aside for technology to be used in community development, whether it be a new permit system or say new, new tablets for the inspectors out in the field. So, it has a limited purpose and the money would be set aside for that purpose. But, yeah, it is an additional new fee.
Christie, how much have we invested in new technology to, you know, for several reasons? Make it more efficient, be more transparent, get back to people quicker, also deal with the shortage of staff?
So, we're, we are in the process right now of going to electronic plan checks. So, we've invested in the purchase of Blue Beam software, which will allow for electronic submission of plans and more expedited review by the various, there's about 16 review parties involved in most building permits. We also have document imaging that we're doing to try and move us towards having all of our building plans available. So, we have that historical information that I think a lot of people wish we had. We have just upgrades and maintenance fees. We have solar permitting requirements that have to be online. There's a lot of requirements that go along with it. So, this again is a way of cap, I, I think when we looked at it per building permit, it wasn't anything crazy to add 10% on to them, especially like if you look at all the smaller ones where I think the concern comes from is, you know, council or having to subsidize that out of the general fund because it can get costly and as we continue to make more changes to be, you know, competitive with our neighbors, that's, and to be able to offer that service level. But, yeah, it's, it's getting costly.
And that's, that's the only reason that I support this is I know how much we've been investing in trying to be more efficient, be more transparent, better documentation, longer storage, better storage instead of something not getting scanned in or getting scanned in in a weird way that doesn't. So, getting the right software and that I, I do know that there are those that are taking advantage of that and really appreciate the, the technology we're investing in. But if our community members are paying for something that is an individual business or application benefit and we're not recouping the costs to not only invest in it, but set aside the money for upgrades, new versions, new software, then, then we won't continue to be efficient as we move in that.
I just wanted to add, you mentioned the general plan maintenance. We are extremely short on funding for updating our general plan. So, those, that's what that maintenance fee is for. I know the amount that, I, I don't know what the amount is that we have, but I know that Dean and I used to talk about it a lot when we talked about updating the general plan and that the cost of doing it was just, I mean, you know, so crazy expensive that that 5% of building permit fees is no way ever going to cover it. So, that's always going to be subsidized.
I think one good thing that you put in there is it lists all the fees that have the 5% surcharge on it. We didn't have that last time and we were calculating that incorrectly, so that's why we came so short, so...
Okay, that helps too. Councilmember Kudova?
On this Community Development Technology fee though, we're basing 10% of all building fees. So, every applicant that comes in would be paying 10% additional towards this, which would be improving our technology. However, we don't really have, I guess, a foreseen cost of what that technology could, could be at this point in time. And so, could this end up being a situation where we end up collecting more in fees down the road than what truly is needed to actually upgrade a software online or something for people to make it online-based? And, and then money sits and so you're collecting and collecting and collecting and collecting from people, but then the money's just sitting there because you've already upgraded your software or you've already done this. I mean, I'd like for us to get to that point, but I think a 10% fee off of everybody that comes in without having an established predicted cost of what this could be to bring us into a, a new age for software or online services is a little unfair because we're leaving this open to the end of time. Everybody's paying 10% and there's no real cost.
Yeah, it, there is an estimate of an annual cost. We put in $100,000 as a ballpark estimate of what the expenses would be. Big part of that is permitting system software should be updated every five to 10 years. They're very expensive. But this money should be set aside in a separate fund and that fund balance should be reviewed annually. See, okay, what's our fund balance, what's our future needs? Do we need to stop this fee because we've raised more money than we, we're going to need or, or decrease it or whatever the case may be?
But, but that never happens. We'll forget about it and that never happens, number one. And number two, I think it's unfair for the people that did pay the 10% and now we've collected a certain amount and now the next set of people that come in because they review, they're no longer paying that 10%. It's an unfair system for me.
I would be curious if Christie or Dean recall how much we spent on the Tyler Munis system and the Intergov component because I'm almost 100% sure it was more than $100,000.
I can definitely say it was more than $100,000. I don't know what the Intergov specifically...
Intergov is your building permit piece of Tyler Munis.
Right, Tyler Munis was a multimillion dollar project, so...
Typically, I'm seeing the permitting software part of that anywhere from $350,000 to $500,000. But, the, the idea is, yeah, this is $100,000 per year for technology. We felt that was a conservative estimate. We did want to be, didn't want to, you know, gold-plated tablets kind of thing with the permit system being the biggest part of that because it's something that you're going to be up, up to redoing every five, six, seven years. But I, I do understand your concern and it is something that, if it is set aside as a separate fund, it's part of the budget process. There's that fund listed, there's that fund balance listed and it's something that can be keyed on from that standpoint. And, and we could have a requirement that staff come back and say, how are we spending that money? Come back to you and say, this is how we spent that money and this is how we're going to spend that money. Similar to like a capital impact fee, annual report. You can require a similar type of annual report of staff.
Well, and don't we, don't, aren't we required to review these fees every five years? So, if nothing else, at five years, we would review that, but we could do it with our, 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 every two years with our budget. It could be part of the built-in review of how much is in that and how much have we spent and how much are we planning to spend?
If it was included in our, as a separate fund, then we would have that included in our annual financial audit as a special revenue fund and it would be reported separately in, in the act for then. And we could review that anytime that we do our review of the, of the comprehensive report.
Okay, so that is something we could do with this, is put it in a separate fund?
We, we could do that. I, I would, would want to look at whether it needs to be in a specific fund or if it could be a specific object code, but I, I'm looking at Eric and he's saying, yes, it is a separate fund and so...
I just volunteered a bunch, hope for a whole bunch of work for her.
You know, we, we have several special revenue funds and that would be what we would, it would...
Okay, so there, it would be a way to transparently track it and trigger us to look at it rather than it just sort of goes sight unseen?
We, there is a way that we could do that.
Okay. Councilmember Vega and then, oh, she turned to Lino.
You know, I also think that the fee being charged and we don't know exactly where it's being invested. And, you know, as we ask these questions here of the finance manager, they don't really know that there's a separate fund. There's not a separate fund, okay? What we do when we vote things in, we're looking for an incentive for the community to build out. But what, what happens is I just want to remind everybody that the fee study is a way to justify fee increases. We need to really be careful if we're looking out for our community, that we make sure that we incentivize whatever's going on here with the Community Development Department to incentivize people that want to come here and develop. I mean, I understand the cost of everything, but again, we're basically talking about subsidizing any cost in technology. But we got to remember that are we in a position here to charge that additional fee to the current developers right now? They're coming in for this community development, so it's just a question. I understand what we're doing here and I understand the aggressiveness from staff wanting everything that they want, but it's our choice. It's our choice to call to say, all right, can we afford this right now?
And that's an excellent point. My question to you is if you think 2%, 10% is too much, what would be something that could? Because we've approved the Tyler Munis system to be implemented. The costs have increased and gone on for things that we now are subsidizing to include. And so, it's not just cost recovery, it's planning for those ongoing costs. So, if you feel 10% is too high, I still think we need to collect something so that we are planning for the potential and, and, and monitoring it.
Currently, I, I believe they said it was 5%, correct?
No, currently, the Community Development Technology isn't collected.
Isn't collecting anything?
It's a, it's a new fee.
Okay, gotcha.
And they're proposing 10%.
Okay.
The general plan maintenance is at 5% and they're not proposing any change there. So, the only new fee is the Community Development Technology fee.
Yeah, personally, I don't think any fee should be charged until we know exactly which fund it's going to be in and be accountable with. Right now, we're asking this finance manager, what fund and we could do this and we could do that, but it's not set in stone on the accountability of where that money's going to be stored. And I understand with any kind of fee that the money is never-ending and I understand we don't know what the full cost is, but we're never going to know what the full cost because they can spend everything that we give them, okay? Just like deposits. Councilmember Starbuck is absolutely correct. It's called a deposit, but it's actually a fee. But it's a way of holding money to, from which we can charge back to the customer. So, it's not really a deposit that's refundable because it's actually going to be used up. As you know, there's no, there's no way of controlling that fee also. If you bring 10 people in at their hourly rate, that money's gone in one hour. So, I think the fee is too high. I think 5% or even zero probably would be something that's not justified right now. So, anyway, I think no fee at all.
Mayor, if I could just for, for a minute. Sure. So, in, to address the concern about not knowing right off the top of my head about what fund this could be in, making changes to our accounting system and to the financial system is, it, it takes many hours to look through all of the implications of how that is reported out. And in order to, it, it would not be wise use of our staff time to implement that before this is approved. And so, on any of these new technology, like this technology fee, to be able to, to make a new fund is a, is a big, it's a big deal. And so, it, it can be done and I'm willing to do it, but I don't want to invest our staff time to doing that whole process until we know that this is an approved fee.
Any other questions for that?
Yeah, you know, one of the things that I have, Christie, and I know you guys are doing your job and you guys are doing a really good job and nothing against staff, but I know that once we give money, the accountability is kind of a whitewash, okay? So, basically, I think what council can do and do a better job at is actually direct the funds so that we know exactly where that money went. Yes, we get it on a financial report, but again, we don't know what the cost is of new technology. I think the technology is going to be built in regardless if you get the money or not. You know, right now, I'd like to know what the incentive is and what the benefit is to the people that are paying this fee coming back because is there a way of them getting any kind of discount because of the technology that's built in? Right now, there's not, but I don't see any incentive to say, hey, guess what? We're going to pay 10% more, but we might save on this end. So, we, what I'm saying is we want to incentivize people that want to develop here in Long Poak so long-term, you know, that it works out.
Well, I, I understand that, sir. I, I just wanted to address the question about the, about not having a fund in place yet. There, that there were business reasons for that and so that was my...
And, and you know, I guess one of my points is through all the years that I've been here on council, we see what happens with the general fund, we know we're subsidized, we have public safety, whatever, but it's a never-ending kind of thing, you know? It's never going to be fully funded, we're never going to be fully staffed. It's just not, it's kind of open-ended on that end and so many things in finance here that we do with fee studies and, and consultants, it's just open-ended. And I'd like us to have a little bit of control on where that money goes before we vote it in, in, in some cases, okay? There's times that we can actually redirect it and hold them accountable. But sometimes what we do is we give the money away and we never hear about it again and then it takes someone else to come back and find out whether there was a carbon credit, there was a refund, where was that thing noted and I think that's our job. Thank you.
Councilmember Kudova?
I, I do want to, I guess, make, make a, I guess, make a statement, if you will. A lot of what we're saying is, is that development doesn't happen in Long Poak because of our fees. I can tell you that is not really true. I am in outside jurisdictions with development projects and I can tell you the fees are outrageous out there. There's a lot of reasons why people aren't developing in Long Poak and it's not just because of the fees or it's not majorly because of fees that we charge because I can honestly tell you the fees are not as high in Long Poak as they are in other jurisdictions. I think it is reasonable to seek cost recovery. People are not building in Long Poak because of demographic, because of feasibility, because of a lot of different things. It is not just because of our fees, so please stop telling the public that because that's not true. What I would like to see with this particular fee, staff mentioned something about Munis. So, so where did the money come from to, to upgrade and, and go into the Munis system and to implement that?
I'm, I'm actually going to defer to Dean to answer that because he was here when...
I'm, I'm actually going to defer to Dean to answer that because he was here when that was approved.
Dean was, Dean was here when that was approved.
That's kind of a complicated question. It's all the funds ended up paying for. A lot of it came from the enterprise funds, so I, I don't know exactly how much came from which fund, but, you know, a lot of it came from, you know, the processing of utility bills, water, electric and so on and so forth, so. But I think the total was somewhere in the tune of about two million dollars.
And that was for the initial transition over to it? And now we've begun to move into the other units that are affecting building and planning and, and aren't supplemented by the enterprise funds, right?
That, that's right, yeah.
Okay.
So that investment has been made and I understand that, you know, it was a high cost, but it's already been made. Somehow, we, we, we were, we were obligated to do it because we needed to stay with, with the way we do business. We needed to stay on top of that. With that said, I'm not against doing some kind of fee for the maintenance or I guess for the, for the, for the, for the future of whatever, to keep these programs going or to keep this technology or software going. I would suggest it to go in a special service fund, just because then it's tracked, it's a new fee, we're able to see it. I, I don't know, without knowing, because we've already done the initial investment, without knowing what the cost would be for us to stay on top of it annually, I feel like ten percent for every person that, that, that comes into the development department to pay, to process, that they have to pay a ten percent seems a little bit high to me without, without having something to compare it to as to what the cost will be for us to maintain software and, and upgrades and stuff like that.
Councilmember Ball?
Yeah, I'm kind of in the middle on all this stuff. I think, and this, I'm going to bring it back to just a simple, big-picture kind of overview. From my understanding, reading through what, you know, when people are doing these types of studies, when you're increasing a fee or you're regulating in some cities that are trying to slow down growth because there's such an explosion of growth, you might create some higher fees to stymie that growth rate. In Lompoc, and again, I know we've gotten, we're way behind on a lot of these fees, we have to do that. Again, I, I just, we don't have a bunch of people knocking down our door all the time to develop and I just wonder if this is something that we need to do. But two, five years from now, we find out, well, twenty percent less people were even showing up to ask about developing here. I know there's no way to know that, but I'm just curious, like, this is a substantial argument. Is this a necessity and we just check the boxes and we do this? Or is it, you know, are we going to have some hindsight in a couple of years where we, gosh, we, we really shot ourselves in the foot with our projected revenue because we assumed everyone would just understand the fee, but it didn't work out that way. So I know that's a lot, but maybe you can elaborate.
There's been a couple instances with some agencies I've worked with where it's come back in five years later and we're doing a review of the building revenues over those five years to help us project forward. We maybe had some large increases for building permits. It didn't affect the volume. The volume of building permits follows the building cycle, follows the economy, doesn't follow fees. Fees just aren't high enough. They're, they're a cost, but they're not something that someone's not, someone's going to build, build and do business in Lompoc because they want to be in Lompoc or they own land in Lompoc. They're not going to decide whether to build here or not because they're paying an extra amount of money. I did the same process for the city of Santa Barbara. Much higher fees, much more intensive process, more than I've seen in the thirty-five years I've been doing this. They have plenty of people who want to build there. It's all about having the place that people want to build. And part of it, from a development process part of it, is how quickly they can get things processed. Because really, for them, time is money. Fees are money, but not to the same degree that time is. So the quicker they can get things processed is really what I hear that developers care most about. But like I mentioned earlier, not every applicant is the same. There's someone who's doing a TI on a house, there's someone who's opening a small business, there's someone who's building a tract.
So you raise a good point about, you know, about efficiency. If we were to just say, you know, this whole thing, let's just check the box, let's do every increase that's suggested, can we as a council expect that there will be added efficiencies? There'll be streamlined timelines on some of this stuff? Is that reasonable to start assuming that?
As we mentioned earlier, this process is not about coming up with the most efficient process. That's a whole, it's frankly, a very intensive process that you can go through that involves council because we find that the biggest chunk of cost for a lot of these planning applications is the time spent for public hearings. Necessary cost. Transparency is expensive, though. It's, so I've seen some cities take this process and decide, does this need to go to the planning commission? Can it be staff level? Does this need to go to city council? Can it be planning commission level? Those are the kinds of decisions from a process standpoint that eventually you would have to sign off on that really moved the needle from how much time it takes to process things, required code changes and such. But those, that's the kind of intensive process that we need to go through to try and figure out some efficiencies.
Thank you.
Since we don't really have a solution just yet, but it seems to be the one thing that we're thinking about, I would offer that we open this section to public comment and then come back and make a decision.
Just want to, one point of clarification.
Sure.
When we were talking about the appeals before, we were talking about the appeal to the planning commission and leaving it at the two fifty-eight. Were we also talking about the appeal to the city council, which is currently two fifty?
Yes.
Okay.
It was about both of them. Thank you for that clarity. All right. If you would like to make a public comment on this section, you may either come to the podium for three minutes or you may call in at eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one.
Excuse me, Steve Bridge, local resident. I had kind of a write-up here that I was going to present, but I, I feel like you guys are David against Goliath in the sense that, you know, the two things I said or the thing that I thought about is this is, you're trying to operate as business, the consultant, I'm sorry, I forgot his name, said this is a business decision. But there's two other components in a business decision. One is kind of, is it appropriate? And I'm hearing you wrestle with that. And the other is, how are we going to improve efficiency? And you're hearing words like, well, we spent a lot of money, we'll improve efficiency. But those are just words. And so you've spent a lot, we've spent a large amount of money on having a consulting come in here and do a pretty damn good job of finding every cost. And this idea of cost recovery is a little bit of a disingenuous because the app is the fee that you just opened the door with, but they're going to charge you, we're going to charge them. Every hour we spend, you're going to get full cost recovery. That's like the lowest bar, your application fee, and the only reason you're doing a deposit is to make sure you get paid. You know, you have something to go get if they don't pay you. So, so cost recovery is a little disingenuous if you're charging for everything. But back to my point, if you were a business and you just spent all this money to find out what the costs are, you would do a study that says, how do we fix this? Why, why are we so expensive? And I'm not suggesting you're expensive, but, you know, why does it take ten hours of planning to do a minor use permit when it's already on the books and everybody said we can do it? You just got to do a safety review, which takes an hour, and you got to do a building department review, which takes them an hour, but planning has to do ten hours? Well, it's because of all the requirements that have been levied on them to meet. And so, like I say, I had a big write-up, but I think where I've come away with is you guys are wrestling with the same things I'm wrestling with. And you might want to consider saying, let's put an efficiency study together and look at why these fees are taking so many hours to do and see if some of those regulations can go away. Do I really need a certificate of appropriateness on a window in an odd fellow's building? Why did we do that to ourselves? Why did we change the word that the state regulation said one thing and we went and made it twice as hard? I'm not complaining, I'm just saying, that's the other side of this equation because the cost or the cost? These guys are experts. They've gone down to the penny and they know what the costs are. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else stand and no one call in, I'll bring it back. So, given this is a new fee and given some of council's resistance to the ten percent, I'd like to make the suggestion that we make it five percent the same as the general plan maintenance. And within a year, if we've had massive costs, you bring it back to our attention and let us know, we didn't set enough money aside. So I know it's not what you asked for, but in trying to consider a balance between knowing we need to start setting funds aside in order to do maintenance and upgrades, so we sort of need to start charging it and we just keep an eye on if it's not enough, revisit it. So that would be my recommendation. Councilmember Vega?
I'd like to tee off on what Councilwoman Cordova said. Approving this fee, but also having it in a fund that we can actually see, feel, touch, so to speak, and be able to gauge this because you can't, you can't really gauge the improvements on what we're going to spend unless we know that money's, if that money's still sitting there, which it probably will, if we could do that, if there's a way of, I think that would be.
I believe we had commitment from, from staff, but we'll actually add it to the motion.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Cordova?
Can somebody tell me, just for my clarification, what a wireless master development plan fee would be?
Page eight.
Sorry, number four.
Councilmember Cordova, that's a really good question. I had a feeling it was going to come up tonight. So if the wireless provider wants to come up or submit an application and do multiple, multiple locations, like, let's say they want to do like ten towers, which hasn't happened yet, usually it's one tower at a time, then we create a new process where we updated the zoning ordinance in 2019 so they could do one permit under that multiple cell sites or telecom sites, and we would do it through that particular permit as opposed to, okay, just permitting each one, one at a time, one at a time. We could do a master plan. So in short, that's what it's for. It is really to expedite and to streamline the process and just do one for multiple sites.
Okay. And that was also mandated by the state? Was it the state or the federal government that said we had to allow it, but that we could force a plan?
I, I believe so. I don't know, the city attorney.
I know there was a, there was a rule coming from the federal or the state that said you had to allow them, but that you could force a process and, and charge a minimal fee, and then we just saw it more efficient to potentially do a plan. Thank you. Does that help? All right. Councilmember Cordova?
So, since we're going to be voting on this separately, or at least right now, we're doing development services, is it possible then for us to say, okay, if we're going to consider then, I think Councilmember Starbuck was saying, the elimination of two of the fees, the, the council?
You actually had three council members recommend to keep the appeal at the same cost.
Oh, to keep it at the same cost, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Would it be fair to consider then that we also say, okay, let's have a study for efficiency done just to see how we're doing? How are we performing? And what would the cost of something like that be truly? To have that consultant come through and tell us, here's your processes, this is where we think you could improve, just for the sake, because we're a business-friendly, friendly community?
That's one thing we do every single budget cycle. We look at all the efficiencies, but we could go out and, and find a consultant. I'm not sure what something that would, something like that would cost. I'm not sure.
Yeah, there, there's process improvements that, yeah, consultants can definitely help you with. I have no idea what the cost would be either, but there's also these larger issues that I was talking about earlier where, does this really need to go to the planning commission? Does this really need to go to city council? Those things can have some big impacts on what the fee would be because you don't have this whole extra level of review that you all may decide is, is not important. That can have a big impact on the fees paid. The process improvements would probably have an impact to the degree that there was improvements on the, the time spent, that, you know, the turnaround time.
So, so you're saying it, it's not a bad thing to consider an efficiency study, but it is completely separate from what the fee structure should be because it might just change what is charged only by improving efficiencies, but that the fee is still likely the same to begin with?
Process is still the same, but you may, the turnaround time may be quicker because you've found some ways to improve.
So, so we could consider that as a separate recommendation after we completed this?
And sometimes, you know, when you do efficiency studies, it comes out the other way around. They go, I can't believe this is all the staff you have. You need more staff and then you're going to end up costing more to the city. But there, it's, it's a study. It can go either way.
Okay. Any more questions?
There's just one particular fee that I, I don't know, I'm struggling with this one, the estimate of development fees. And I could tell you, oh.
Uh, page eleven.
Eleven. This particular one, from prior experience, this can change up to three times during a development project in Lompoc, and I can tell you that from experience. So you're, you're given an amount and then someone comes and says, oh, no, sorry, we forgot this. Oh, no, sorry, we forgot this. And it can happen two or three times. And then it's like, so I, I don't know that it's fair that we necessarily charge people because a developer says, hey, can you estimate what my fees are going to be? I think that's unfair.
I, I would just clarify on the estimated fee. Again, this is, this is showing you what your fee would need to be to pay for all the staff time that goes into doing that fee estimation. And the city of Lompoc is different than a lot of other jurisdictions in that we have our own electric department. And I would say what that department has to put into estimating actual cost, trying to get it as close as possible because it's such an important fee for electric is super challenging and it's a lot of time. So that's where trying to come up with, how do we, in, how do we cover the cost of staff's time? So again, this is another form of economic development. If you say, we want a hundred percent subsidized because that's a form of economic development, that's fine. It's just what we were tasked with was showing you what it costs us to do that piece of business. And I recognize that that fee can change multiple times. It's only as good as the data that we receive. And I think anyone who's gone through a development process knows that oftentimes their project changes multiple times. The square footage might change, the load they need from electric. So oftentimes, I've gone back and forth three or four times with different information to try and nail that fee down as close as possible. But I would, I would definitely say that that is one of our best types of economic development we do in the city of Lompoc is work with a developer applicant to try and give them an idea of what their fees are going to be.
And the applicant isn't required to go through this process? This is something that they're asking staff to do that analysis?
Correct, correct. And I, I mean, I think the last one I did, I myself went to every single division with that form and went over it with every single person and tried to get those fees to a place where that developer felt good moving forward with his financing for a project. And the end of the day, he did. And so, do I think it's a good investment of our time and money? Absolutely. But it does require a lot of staff time.
So first off, I just want to say thank you for that explanation and clarification. I think that's super helpful to this. I, and I think you brought up, brought up a good point about, you know, that we have those decisions to make. Are we, do we lean towards economic development or just cost recovery? I think to her, to Councilmember Cordova's point, I look at this fee as, even though it's, it's not an expensive fee, but it's a service, right? It's like, I just want to estimate. I need help so that I can bring commerce and economic growth to the city and you're going to charge me for an estimate. It's not much, but to me, that's, it's just a sticky thing. To me, I'd love to see us a little more progressive and it's like, yeah, we do subsidize that specific thing because we're trying to help you get open because that's the point, right?
What I would add, and not to push you in one direction or the other, but just to try to give you, I always try to give you guys all the information. But the other thing is, is staff's time is extremely valuable. I don't need to tell you how, you know, lean we are at the city of Lompoc. But if I charge no fee, what is going to stop someone from giving me a really crummy submission for a project? giving me a really crummy submission for a project that I'm going to spend a bunch of people's time trying to get information to give them a fee estimate, and they're not really serious about a project? I think sometimes those fees that we charge is, is, has an intention also to deter from those types of applications. But again, it's, that's, that's the decision at hand.
And I, I definitely hear where you're coming from. I guess my only pushback would be is, we have it at zero right now, what is the direct impact currently? Are we having a bunch of people bringing us really ridiculous things that are forcing us to go give them estimates? Is that happening?
Yes. I do get some really interesting ones, where I spend a lot of time, but we work through them. That's, that's what we're tasked with.
Fair enough.
Councilmember Cordova.
Well, I can, I can maybe consider that, what if this, I, I can understand charging someone if there's not an application in already, that they're not doing, you know, but once they're in the development, once their application is in and their project is moving forward, which is typically when somebody wants to know what their fees are. If they're inquiring beforehand, okay, I understand if, if there's no application fee, there's no guarantee, and we're having to spend time to, to give them an estimate, which hopefully it's correct, because I can tell you, the square footage on the project that I did didn't change, nothing had changed, and yet my numbers were wrong three times. So at least if we're going to charge people, make sure we give them an accurate estimate, but that we don't charge it once they're in the application fee, or, or in the application process, or, I, I don't know, I just, I, I really have a problem with this fee. I feel like this, this estimate is factored in somewhere in each division or each department, that they should be able to produce a cost of, of what the fees will be, like, that's, to charge someone for that, I just think is ridiculous.
Okay.
Can I just add real quick? So is there a way for us to, I mean, again, this is, we're talking about process, I, I would hate for you to have a line of people with horrible ideas, just taking a bunch of time, that you have to say, oh, here's an estimate, but please, this is not going to work, versus somebody that's already in the pipeline, so maybe you can educate us on when this, when are people asking for this estimate?
It, it is kind of all over the place, so, I guess the most recent one that I did, they were close to submitting, but they hadn't submitted yet. They weren't comfortable submitting their application for the project until they really nailed down, I mean, the big ticket fees were the development impact, and then there, and I think it was like the traffic impact, and then, like I said, they had to get a transformer, and that cost was pretty significant, and it had changed a lot from the prior projects. So I, I couldn't just, or I should say, electric couldn't just pull what previous ones were, they tried to give a true, a true estimate of the most current timing. So, again, I, I mean, it's not a terrible thing to not have the fee, I just, again, want you to have all the information.
I appreciate that. I'd be happy to, to be somewhere in the middle if council thought that there should be at least some sort of, some fee that, you know, deterred some of the ridiculous ideas, but didn't prevent people from trying to get something open in Lompoc.
So, I would concur with Councilmember Cordova, that if they're already in the pipeline, it's part of the service and it's factored in. If they aren't submitted yet, that it is a cost recovery, and it's not that much, right? $365 to get all of the different divisions, and especially if there's electric involved, and get that big number satisfied, and it be a make or break, I, I don't see, and given they only suggest that it might happen maybe three times per year, I mean, it's, it's not going to happen that often, I think it would happen a lot if we didn't institute this. So if we can say that it's only charged if they're not in the process, then I think it's a, a reasonable fee.
So I, I mean, if I can clarify, I, I could support that, if we kept the fee at this number, but that was only for people that were just curious, weren't committed to anything, and weren't in the pipeline, but again, those that are already being nickel and dimed a little bit to get into the process to try, I'd love to support.
Yeah, if they've already got a deposit down, and they've already started the process, there's no reason to add this additional fee. If they've not come in and been willing, this is even less of an expense than putting a deposit down and then going to a BRB. But you'd get a lot of information for $365, and likely cover the nine to 10 hours of staff time it takes to go to each of the division and departments, and gets a, a good estimate, maybe it's not perfect, but a good estimate. Would you agree that leaving it in place for those that aren't, haven't submitted anything and, and aren't in the pipeline already?
I would agree to that.
Okay. Okay, so, the only three, three areas that we've had any discussion that we need to agree on is, we are maintaining the $258 for an appeal to planning commission or city council, that it's a 5 percent community development technology fee instead of 10 percent, with a specific revenue line to track and, and revisit, and the $365 for the development fees will be in place for those that are not, are ready in the process of, of planning and building. Councilmember Cordova.
One more.
Yeah, sure, that's what we're here for.
So, the stormwater grading plan review, I noticed that's a new fee, and that's 405 per plan, that would be page 12, along with the stormwater pollution prevention plan review, for another 540.
That's public works.
Oh, okay. Uh, stay tuned.
All right, okay. All right.
Those are not public works, actually, they're just in the wrong area.
Oh, okay, there, there we go, so, because they're under public works on this page.
I know, I know. All right.
Okay.
I think because in some jurisdictions, stormwater is under public works, so, you know, but...
So I guess, I guess that, okay, so we're going...
A little different here.
Yeah, well, but it's actually under utilities, because it's under our water and wastewater.
So, all I would speak to that Councilmember Cordova is, we, we do have to, we have to do special review for stormwater...
State mandate, right?
Yeah, and there is a cost, and right now, actually, we contract that out, so we, we're really falling short as far as cost recovery on that, or on those fees. So, again, that's at 100 percent trying to cover those costs.
So that's not something that would be covered, how are you covering it right now? Or is it, is it being rolled up into the grading plan review?
No, you guys pay for it. You, you general fund pay for that person's salary or that contract that we have, but that's the cost of that service of doing it. We're still doing it.
But the developer is also paying the stormwater, the stormwater pollution district and whoever it is.
They don't pay for them. We don't, we don't charge a fee.
Right, no, I know we're not paying the city, but a developer is paying the pollution control, the stormwater pollution, and you're, you're paying for that, you open an account and you're paying...
Yeah, but that, they're paying the state water board.
Right.
We review it.
So why are we paying you guys?
Because we review it, and we're responsible for going out and doing the inspections. We have staff people that go out and do those inspections, so that's us. So while, I think it's real interesting, the state, the state does things, but then we do all the work, much like cannabis, you know, the Bureau of Cannabis Control tasks our police department and our staff with doing the enforcement piece of things. So that's the same with the state water board.
So they're charging a fee, but they don't actually do the work, and don't give any of that money back to us...
Correct.
For doing the work.
Yeah, those are all...
You don't charge a fee and you do the work.
Yes.
But we're doing the work and we're not covering it.
I'm sure they do some stuff, but they're not doing, yeah, so they're not doing the management plan, they're not doing the inspections, they're not doing a lot of the components that we have to do, when a project is, you know, it's, or, or the plan check review of those permits.
So the fee that's paid to the state covers a certain amount of things, but not everything that's required?
I don't know what that fee covers. I know they do get a number, because that number has to be on our permit.
Okay. Okay. Any other things on page 12 or 13 that are also community development, before I move on? Because stormwater goes through half of page 13, and then there's also the cultural resources overlays, so I'm assuming all of that is still community development? And public works doesn't actually start till page 14?
I think public work starts, and Mike can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think public work starts at SO 56, concrete encroachment.
Okay, so that is page 14, so we're actually doing all the way through page 13 right now. So anything else on page 12 or 13? Councilmember Cordova.
Okay, so not to be a stickler, but if, if we're going to roll this all up, on page 13, you are charging a stormwater business inspection fee, you are charging additional services, actual cost to the developer, you are charging, or we are charging, I apologize about that, you are not charging, we are charging, stormwater development inspection fee.
The, the other fee is the one we've been talking about, the grading plan review, is more during construction, so it's around the, the stormwater regulations around the grading, whereas the stormwater business inspection is for certain types of businesses, they're ongoing stormwater requirements.
So I'm, I'm going to hold to the fact that, I, I don't know that these two new fees are necessarily not being covered somewhere in our scope of what we're already doing.
Because with, with the new fees, with the grading plan review and the prevention plan review, those are being done either by your senior environmental coordinator, or right now they're being done by contract. The development inspections, the stormwater development inspection is while you're, during a development, making sure that they have their BMPs in place, their best management practices in place, sandbags and such, shake plates, to make sure that they're doing that during construction, that's being done by an engineering tech, by your inspector. And so there's different things that the different parts of, are, are looking at for different requirements. So that's where the development inspection fee is the existing fee, but that does not cover the time spent on the grading plan review and the inspection of the grading, stormwater grading requirements. Whereas the, the stormwater development inspection fee, S 55, is from grading forward, all the, all the inspections related to that construction, making sure that their stormwater practices are in place.
Okay, so according to this, the stormwater grading plan review isn't currently charged, and it's 405 per plan, and the pollution, sewer water, stormwater pollution prevention plan review, no fee is being charged, and then it says 540 per plan, and then underneath it, it says if the project has an existing deposit, then the charge is against that deposit. So, we're not currently charging it, and the plan is only to pull it out against the deposit unless it's not got a deposit. Okay. Councilmember Cordova.
But just for clarification, the grading plan review, because again, if you're pointing out that this all has to do with grading, the grading plan review is saying that the applicant is paying directly to the contract provider. So how do you know then that they're not covering it in their scope of what they're charging the guest, or the, the customer, or the developer?
Because I believe they're two separate contractors, there's the one that's reviewing the grading plan.
So things have changed, just so, to be really clear to you, you might see that that's the senior environmental coordinator time, so since this analysis was done, that position, I don't think it's eliminated, but that person retired, and so a lot of our storm, and that's where some of this confusion comes from, is a lot of our stormwater, when it went to build, the building permit piece of it, that got peeled off, those stormwater pieces and responsibilities, we had our contract person do that piece of it, that, that, that position was doing. Then we have the stormwater requirements, like the business inspections, and there's a couple other things that went to utilities, and so it, it all was under planning at one point, and now it's kind of been separated out. So, I was just talking to Brian, and we aren't billing our applicants from their planning deposit for any of the time that Bethel, our contract, plan check reviewer, is spending on those. So, I know it has a fee in here that we could charge, but, and then we haven't been doing those, I don't think we've been doing those inspections, because those are what your stormwater specialist person does, unless Brad knows if utilities is doing that. So I, I apologize, because it is peeled off, and it's separated, and it's not all in my department anymore. So there's been a bit of a shift in how all of this is done, compared to what is on this detail work, because you're seeing senior environmental coordinator.
And, and the applicant, whereas a standard grading plan, the applicant is paying the, the contract reviewer directly, for standard grading plan review.
No, we collect it, right? Yeah, no, no, we collect it. And then we have a contract with Bethel, and we pay them, and then we charge that against them, the applicant.
But currently, we're not charging...
Not for stormwater.
Okay.
Grading permit, yes.
Okay. But not for stormwater grading permit?
But it's being done. So, so...
Everything that has to be done is done.
And just a few months ago, just, something that just popped into my mind, and I'm sorry to be a stickler about this, but, and again, this is not against staff, this is us trying to figure out, should we be charging for this or not, right? This is up to council, not up to staff, they're just presenting information to us. Just a couple months ago, there was a resident who reached out to me about an existing development, and there was a stormwater issue, and I personally, on behalf of this person, contacted the city to figure out, okay, what can we do about this? And the city said, no, we don't handle it, it goes through stormwater, and I had to help this gentleman figure out how to get through the stormwater. Luckily, I have experience doing that, so I was able to talk to him about it, but I just, that just popped into my mind, so I'm having a problem even more, I guess, charging for something when I literally just told someone that per the city of Lompoc, we don't do that, so please go contact the stormwater district.
And I think, I'm curious, Councilmember Cordova, when you say stormwater, are you referencing the state water board? Is that who you're having them contact? Because that's usually the person or the entity that's responsible from the state level. Okay.
Because the stormwater work that staff is doing is at the development level, during construction, plan review, review of that construction site, inspection of that construction site, as well as kind of ongoing business inspections. So it's kind of limited to those areas?
From the development standpoint.
So what I just want to make sure of is, is that we're not charging a fee that is already being calculated by whoever is doing, whoever is the contract provider up on the grading plan review, because when, when, when you're in development and you're in that grading plan, or you're in that, that stage of everything, it has to get done. So if we're saying on top that during the, the grading plan review and the grading inspection, you're going to be charged by the contract provider, I'm assuming that somebody's providing for that, and I can almost guarantee you, somebody's charging for it, aside from the fact that the developer is required to open up an account with the state, with the state water board, and, and do all the process themselves and fill out the, the sheets, because I've learned how to do that. And so I just don't want to charge for something that, that we say we have oversight on, when in reality, we, we are not doing it, and it could be that if it is getting done, it's getting summed up somewhere else around, along the thing, but now we've carved out a fee that we can charge someone, and then somewhere along the line, someone, they may, they may not notice, but I would notice.
I think the best way to analyze that piece of it is to look at what staff time and which positions are in that grading plan. Are, does it include four hours of a storm, of a senior environmental coordinator? So back when this was prepared, if we had double counted that time, we would have known by looking at these sheets. And I, as I recall, we were extremely thorough, so...
For the grading plan review, we had it all being done by contract.
Right. So this is in addition to...
Again, it's just hard for me to believe that this contractor is not charging for this service, those services somewhere in his list of fees, because if he's, if he's the contractor that's responsible for the grading site...
I get two bills, one for stormwater review, and I get one for grading review. So I know what I have to pay, that's...
Right, and so what you're saying is, you get two bills, one that says grading plan review, and it meets and matches the fees we charge to recover for the grading plan. The port that doesn't match is the stormwater, because we don't currently charge for that stormwater. stormwater grading plan review. And so it's currently being subsidized through general fund funds.
So yes, we're 100% cost recovery on the grading permit standpoint, but not on the stormwater standpoint.
Right. And so what you're saying is, you're getting two bills, one for grading plan review and grading inspection, one for stormwater grading plan review, and pollution prevention plan review. And you currently charge enough 100% cost recovery for the grading plan, but we've been supplementing the stormwater, because we didn't have the fees, so we haven't been passing them on. Councilmember Starbuck.
Let the hits keep coming. I was gonna talk about the appeal of the building decision. None to an appeal of building decision. Now you're talking about 1,985. That's a huge increase. I don't know, Matt, what's involved in all this, but you know, you went from zero to 2,000. And the other one here is, you know, the cultural resource overlay reviews and stuff. This has been here for years, decades. We already know where the overlay is. It should only take minutes to look about, why are we reviewing something that's decades old?
Well, for the overlay exemption, we didn't have a lot of time. We had an hour of time to determine, someone's asking for an exemption, to make sure that that exemption makes sense and is appropriate. The, the actual review, with certain construction projects, making sure it complies with the cultural resources code. So smaller projects, larger projects, that's, so it's a review that's been happening. It's again, it's something that just hasn't been recovered in the past. So it doesn't take a lot of time. It takes time.
It almost seems like it takes more time to bill it than to go ahead and do it.
Were you going to answer the question about the appeals for the building decision?
Oh, overlay.
Okay, overlay, because nobody's yet talked to the appeal of building decision, so.
That's a good question.
Finish, finish your overlay.
Yeah, and it does come up, overlay a lot. So obviously, we have the presence of the mission and the JUMASH. And so we actually have a separate section in the zoning code. So we look at that, and then sometimes, nobody really knows this is going on, but sometimes we have to work with a consultant. We review a contract if they have to have monitoring on the site. So there is a little more than just saying, is it in the overlay, or if it's not in the overlay. So we work with someone who's submitting a building permit, see if it's in the overlay, and then they need to have someone monitor it. We make sure that there's a contract in place. So there's a little bit more involved in that than just say, oh, it's not an overlay, or it isn't an overlay, and you're done. So I just wanted to clarify a little bit, so.
Oh yeah, I'm aware. Go to the cemetery sometime.
The, on the building decision appeal, we don't charge now, and that, you are our appeals board, so that staff time associated is just the research, researching, preparation of a staff report, you know, gathering, and that's my time, building officials' time, and then our plans examiner, inspector time. That's typically who puts time into that. And that's pretty, I think, that one, as far as how you want to set that fee, is very much in line with kind of the, the planning commission appeal type of thing, or the, the planning appeal. That's dependent on how, how you guys want to do that. But that's the time that goes into it, on average.
On average, but we could reduce it if we want to do. Okay. You were, you were going to share.
Mayor, council?
Yeah, I was going to explain that this really is driven by staff time. This would be the, to prepare a report to explain what the discrepancies would be. Obviously, the goal is to handle this well before an appeal to, to handle this, so we're not slow. But this would be the, the staff time committed to do this.
Councilmember Cordova.
Could we consider maybe on the appeal of the building decision, to make it a, like a fee for them to make their appeal, and then if that appeal is not in their favor, then they, they know that they will pay the full amount. But if, if the appeal comes back in their favor, then all they have spent is whatever the fee is, like a smaller amount for them to actually file for their application and be heard.
We, councilmember Cordova, we have that in our code already. If the appeal is successful for a building permit appeal, then the fee is refunded.
I guess what I was talking about is, you're going from zero, you're charging them zero. Right, right now, it says there's none.
Well, every appeal in our code, except for zoning appeals, if the appeal is successful, then the fee is refunded. So if we added this fee, it would apply to that, too.
Okay, but her request was, could we say, make it the same as an appeal to council at 258, but they lose, could that then be mandated that they pay the full cost recovery for having done the analysis? That's what you were asking, I'm saying. That's, it's the reverse. Not a reimbursement, but charge a lesser fee for the appeal, and then if they lose, they have to pay the full cost recovery.
I don't, I, I don't like that idea, because we would be then incentivizing, the city would get additional funds if we denied an appeal.
And that's why we ask you these clarity for legal.
That's among, among one of the issues. There could be others as well. So I would recommend against doing that.
Can I, just a, just a thought. If we're, let's real life this. Someone comes in here with an appeal. They spent 258, or whatever their dollars are. We don't like it. We say, I'm sorry. They're walking from this place to that door, knowing they, they're on the hook for another, what, $1,700? That's probably not a good logistical approach to this.
I was just getting clarity on the question that councilmember Cordova asked. So in response to that, the, the option we have is go with staff recommendation, still charge none, or reduce it. And so, so that's the option, if you have a suggestion.
I, I'll throw this out there. I'd say it should be the same, the 258 for the appeal, and maybe double it if they lose.
But he just said, we can't do, if they lose, that it's a bad thing to then have a penalty after they lose. That, that was the clarity, and you just made the point for that. Everybody's buttons on, awesome. Okay. And I didn't see half of them push it, but I think I saw Cordova first.
I think Victor.
Or was it Victor? Okay, because you guys are on the same side of my lightbox here.
Yeah, yeah.
Go, go ahead, Vega.
I, I think the, the fee, the standard fees, and it's nothing right now, stay, stay stable. You're right. You don't want the, the city to benefit by saying no, okay? Because they'll say no all the time. Shoot, what the heck? They'll make money. So let's leave the fee as the same thing as to appeal to council, would be my suggestion, would should be the 257, or whatever it is.
258.
258. And then, win or lose, that's just what the fee is, be my suggestion, since the city attorney said, you know, you can't make it unequal. If they lose, you pay more.
That's just a bad, bad.
It's just a bad, it's a bad.
It's a bad policy.
I guess this is a reasonable question for staff. Is this, is the requirements for prepping for this type of appeal, this line item appeal, versus the other, you know, planning commission appeal, or is it much more tedious, or is it similar? If it's similar, then yeah, it's no brainer, 258.
No, I think your cost recovery on the planning one, if you look at the planning appeal to the planning commission decision one, your, your cost as far as what we recommended, you approved a fee way lower than the 100% cost recovery.
Yeah, we kept it at 258, instead of going to the, let me find the page.
Yeah.
Instead of going to nearly, yeah, $500 to the planning commission, and $1,000 to us.
Yeah.
So we kept it low, and didn't do 100% cost recovery.
You did like 50%?
Yeah.
And just to give you a little math, you know, that, I like the math. If we were to go with 258 on this as well, it would be a 13% cost recovery.
That's pretty low.
Oh, mayor?
Yes. Yeah, you could.
Okay, you know, and the other thing I wanted to remind council, okay? We're here shoring up the boat for staff in city hall, but we should be asking what the incentive is for the public and the people wanting to build and whatever here, you know what I mean? We don't ever ask that. Yes, it's full cost recovery to pay for their salaries and everything, but what's the benefit, and what's the incentive to get people to come over here, and if they do have an appeal, or they do want to come over here and appeal to council? Is it negative? Is it a positive? What are we here for? We were elected, we weren't hired. We're not like staff. They're here to do their job, and they're showing up the boat for their, their, their salaries. But we also were elected to, you know, kind of, as a representative for the residents of Lompoc. So I think we should keep that in mind also.
All right. Starbuck.
I was gonna throw something out here. Does it take all three of them people? Because we'll take an example. This happens once a year, and I'm gonna assume the community development director's you, huh, Christie? That's you, yeah.
That's me, and I'm active in these.
Yeah, well, three hours, 900, that's 300 bucks an hour. Let's kick it up a bunch, and say, do it in an hour and a half.
You got it.
That way, we can save.
You will get an hour and a half quality, though.
Oh, okay. I'm just saying, you know, what these people are paying for here.
I'm just messing with you. I'll stop it, Starbuck.
I'd be dragging my feet here.
Councilmember Cordova, and then Ball.
Well, I was just gonna say that, this isn't something that comes up every week or even every month. We're saying that we, on an average, have one per year. So I don't, I definitely don't think people are abusing this in any way, and they don't pay anything right now to use it. So why, why charge, I guess?
Cost recovery. So the idea is, and I know everyone hates this, but part of our responsibility is not to subsidize from the general fund when it's an individual coming in for a service. And so granted, it hardly ever happens. If it happens, it's currently predicted at one time. And I know that losing $2,000 estimated is not a whole lot. But I would say putting it at 258 as a way to make all the appeals at the same level, and at least say that it's time that is taken away, and some of the cost is covered, and the rest is subsidized. At, at least when they come in for the appeal, they know it's not just a random, because as we talk about this, it becomes aware that there's no fee, and we might suddenly have a flood of, of appeals, of risk.
So I would agree with that. The only thing, I guess, let me clarify a little further. The reason why I believe people aren't, developers aren't coming in here knocking on our door every month or every week for a building appeal is because you really can't appeal building code. I mean, you gotta have a very serious reason why you're going to challenge the building code. So I just think, that's fine. I'm okay for the sake of us moving on, the 258. But trust me, this isn't an everyday occurrence. So we're not, there's no real cost recovery here.
Well, there definitely isn't, because 258 compared to 2,000. That would be my recommendation as a way to move forward. Councilmember Ball?
Yeah, I just, hopefully, we can get through this section, maybe consider the next one. But I know these details matter. I just, and again, no offense to what you said, Christie, I appreciate that. You know, an hour and a half worth of work, and if, I'll just say it like this, we're probably not gonna get this council right now to demand an efficiency study that's gonna affect this conversation right now. But I just want to remind staff, I'm, I'm learning how this goes. There will be an efficiency study the next time the budget comes around. Why? Because that's where we have our fingers in efficiency and accountability. So whether it's down the road, there will be a time where we have said, we have increased the revenue, we have done these things. There will become a time where we're gonna have to demand some sort of accountability, and that's gonna happen. So just a reminder, efficiency-wise, if we can't get there sooner than later, this is a question that's gonna burn a hole in my head all the way to the next budget.
Councilmember Vega.
You know, councilman, woman Cordova, you brought up an excellent point. Sometimes we vote something in just to move on. And I don't think it's a good, I think when you filed a, anything that you have to do through the building department, and you have to file an appeal, it seems like the appeal should have been part of the process, you know? The fee seems like it's extra, as part of the process. When you go in there and you get denied, isn't that part of your right to file an appeal outside of having to pay again? You're coming, you're coming over here to appeal to the council or the planning commission, but we're paying for staff time, but really to apply to the council, which we're supposed to be the representative, and the planning commission, which is also a representative or an extension of the council, why are we even charging? For them to appeal something that they already went through the process, and they probably already paid some money for. I mean, full cost recovery, and then there's, it's minimal, the amount of money we're making on it. So maybe why are we even charging at all? I had to rethink this, okay? I think maybe, that maybe we should leave it at zero. And no, no fee for an appeal, because you're already paying to be part of that process. Seems like it's a penalty to being denied.
Councilmember Cordova.
But I guess for the sake of what the city attorney said, if they win the appeal, they get their money back. They get the appeal, the fee back.
Yeah, they get the 258 back.
At least 258 is, I can put my head on my pillow tonight.
Okay.
But again, just like you said with stormwater, you said, why are they charging when it has to be charged somewhere? So it's the same concept, you know? If there is a fee, just for the sake of moving on, we should be able to make a good, a better decision based on the same concept, because I agree with you. I think that just to charge, just to move on, I think this one isn't gonna make anybody any money, but it will incentivize someone to go through the process and come and appeal, because I think that is their right. So really, I'd like the fee to stay zero for the appeal.
Councilmember Ball?
So I, I can respect that, but I can also see a scenario where people say, it's free. I don't like the decision. I don't care what the state said or the mandates are. I just don't like it. So I want to go talk to council. Do they have a right to do that for free? I don't know. If I go and appeal something, and the court systemized, I'll have to pay an attorney to show it for me, et cetera. So there are costs. So I don't mind there being some sort of cost to prevent a few people that probably don't need to appeal and have no valid right to appeal.
Okay. So right now, on the community development section, we have $258 appeals for coming to city council, the planning or building. We have 5% on the development technology with the fund to monitor it. Anything else?
Making clear that the estimate of development fees is pre-application submitted.
Thank you, that was it. I couldn't remember, because I lost my page. Okay, those are, those are the current changes.
I have one, mayor.
Yes.
Fee S-48 on page 12. The, I think I heard earlier, our consultant asked whether that fee is paid directly by the applicant to the contract provider.
And that's what it says here.
For, for plan review. So for plan review, we were told that they pay the, the contract provider directly, the applicant, for plan review, but for permit, it's pay the city.
So if...
Is that right, or is the plan review that they pay the applicant directly wrong?
If that's incorrect, we can probably just change it to actual cost, and that would fix it.
They all pay us.
Okay.
They all pay us, and then we pay the developer, or, I'm sorry, the app, the consultant, and so that, yeah, they pay us.
So where it says on S-48, and S, in both columns, it says the applicant directly pays the contract provider, that's untrue.
Right, so to correct that.
That needs to be striked. Oh, that's a grading plan review.
Right.
Right.
Is that correct?
That one's not mine.
Right.
I think that the difference is, we're looking at two different fees here. The S-048 is a grading plan review, whereas the, the one that we were talking about, that Chris, that they collect in the stormwater, is the stormwater grading plan review. See if I get to the right page.
We talked about both, because we were comparing it, because...
Yeah, S-051A.
So S-51A is the new one, because according to staff, they don't currently collect, and we're subsidizing that, even though we're charged for it. And in comparison, the grading plan is charged for, but according to this statement in the fee structure, says the applicant directly pays the contract provider, and if that's not true, we need to strike that.
You can strike that. That's how it used to be done.
Okay.
When our stormwater, or our environmental coordinator was here.
In-house. And since none of that is in-house, both the grading plan review, and the stormwater grading plan review, and the stormwater pollution prevention plan review are all done by consultants. And currently, the only thing that we're charging the applicant for is the grading plan review. And currently, the only thing that we're charging the applicant for is the grading plan review and we're, we're covering the stormwater grading plan review and the stormwater pollution prevention plan currently out of pocket from the general fund. All right.
So, so for S forty-eight, the grading plan review, it needs, the language that's there needs to be stricken.
Struck, yep.
And it needs to be replaced with consultant, actual cost?
Actual contract cost.
Actual contract cost, okay.
Okay. Okay. Any other recommended changes to pages one through thirteen? Councilmember Cordova?
Again, so what's on the table right now is we're keeping the appeal to the planning commission the same at two fifty-seven point eighty. And we're also keeping the appeal to the council at two fifty-seven point eighty.
Yep. And we're, we're putting the same price in place for the building appeal. Yeah, and we're only putting five percent of the community development tech, technology assessment rather than ten percent. And we are striking the words, the applicant directly pays for the contract provider on the grading plan review and saying, actual contract costs are reimbursed to the city. And...
Wait, repeat that again?
So on the very top of page twelve, S forty-eight, grading plan review, it currently says the applicant directly pays the contract provider. That is not true because it is actually, the actual contract cost is reimbursed to the city. And those are the words that will be put in place.
And, and is there anything that keeps us from adding a fee later on if it's not on here that we could consider a year from now or two years from now or whatever?
You have to come back to the council and council have to...
Right, but that's something that we can do individually, right? So I'm still gonna hold against the stormwater grading plan review and against the stormwater pollution prevention plan review only because I don't feel that I have clarification on this. So if I, if I vote no, once we go to vote, it's because of that. Okay.
Gotcha.
Um, and then the other thing was the, um, and you just said it and I lost it again because it's on another page. Anything else I'm forgetting? It's part of the change? Yeah, that's the five percent, yeah. Okay.
For, for the stormwater grading plan review and the stormwater prevention plan review, would it help if those fees were actual contract cost recovery also instead of the flat fees that are recommended? So charged the same way that the grading plan review is charged?
I guess somebody would have to prove that they actually did it, right? If they're gonna charge it.
Well, they get a statement. What Christie is saying is she gets a bill that says, here's the grading plan review cost, here's the stormwater grading plan review cost, and here's the stormwater pollution prevention plan review cost. And currently, the only thing she's collecting from that bill of the contractor is the grading plan review and the stormwater grading plan review and this stormwater pollution prevention plan review, she's not doing cost recovery because there's not been a fee to do it. And so either the fee or what the actual contract cost is.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay with what I, what I, what I feel on this one.
Okay. Councilmember Vega?
Uh, just to clarify, the fee was already two fifty-seven eighty, is that correct? For the city council thing? And, and just, just to make a good point, I just feel that appeal to the planning commission may be one thing because of a, of a, of a decision made by building department. But I still feel that the public shouldn't have to pay to come and, and place their appeal to, to their representatives, you know? So I wanted to make that point clear. You know, it's kinda odd that we charge them after they vote us in to come over here and talk to us. Okay?
Okay.
This is the appeal to the city council.
Yeah.
You're gonna charge them so they can talk to you.
But it's still staff time to prepare that staff.
Gotcha, but I'm talking about us. Because like I say, that's their end. We're not here to say yes to everything staff wants. That's what the consultant was there to, to shore their boat up. But I just wanna say, hey, what's the benefit to the public?
So the benefit is, to the public is, this individual wants to make the appeal. And by charging the individual for the appeal, it covers staff time to create the report and do the research to provide to us so we can have the public hearing. And that means all of the community doesn't have to cover the cost of that appeal. That's what that means. And that's why it benefits the community.
I got you, and thank you. I just don't agree.
Okay. All right. If there are no other suggestions for changes, then I will make a motion that we accept the community development updates and seek a motion, a second on the motion.
Oh, I voted, sorry.
Councilmember Ball?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Before you vote, I just wanna make sure that you're approving all of the fees from page one through thirteen with the changes to S zero four six A revised to five percent. S zero four five A, um, no submission of plan, there's a charge of three hundred and sixty-six dollars. S zero four four, it will remain at two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. As will S zero five zero A will be two hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. And that you have the strike of the wording on forty-eight of actual contrast costs instead of the other.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Ball?
I hit the wrong button, sorry.
Okay, all right, let's vote. And that fails three-two. All right, then somebody make a motion. Councilmember Cordova?
I motion that we move forward with everything except for the stormwater until we can confirm that we're actually doing that service and that it's not already being done somewhere else or, or, you know? Because I heard different stuff. So I say we move forward without the stormwater and then everything else I'm okay with. And then we can always bring back the stormwater later.
Okay, so the stormwater you're referring to is fifty-one A and fifty-one B. Okay, so pull those two and wait for additional documentation to potentially add them back to the fee. All right, that's the motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Ball has seconded. Let's go ahead and vote. And that passes three-two. All right. The next section is Public Works. It is page thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen?
Madam, madam mayor, I thought you said thirteen was part of ComDev?
Oh, sorry, thirteen is part of it. It is fourteen, fifteen. Fourteen and fifteen, okay. So we have two pages and then we'll take a break, okay? So Public Works is page fourteen and fifteen. Any questions, concerns, changes you'd like to see in the Public Works section? Councilmember Cordova?
Um, I actually looked at this one and I thought that this one was, was, there wasn't anything that stood out to me on this one. So I'm okay with all of these unless there's any public comment that would help me consider otherwise.
Okay. Any more comments, questions before we go to public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll open the floor for a public comment on the Public Works pages on the handout with just the fees. It's page fourteen and fifteen. If you would like to speak to this item, you may come to the podium or you may call in at eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. And again, it's pages fourteen and fifteen of the reduced handout. All right, seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close public comment on this section. If there's no recommendations, I'll entertain a motion to accept them. Councilmember Cordova?
Motion to accept, um, page fourteen and fifteen, which categorizes Public Works.
Awesome. Councilmember Ball?
I'll second that.
All right, moved and seconded, let's vote. And that passes five-zero. It is nine, uh, eleven. So let's take a quick ten-minute break because the line at the loo might be long.
The line at the loo might be long. handout, pages sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen regarding housing. Okay. Any comments, concerns?
Just wanted to ask, make a request that when we are referencing these pages on the handout, if we could, when we're talking about a specific line item, use the reference number in the first column on the left, the S dash whatever number. That way it ties to the PDF that viewers at home are able to see. This handout is in the lobby.
Okay. Well, I mean, you provided us this tool, so I'm using it. Because the other is four hundred some odd pages.
We can definitely use this tool, but let's use that reference number.
To your point, using the reference number, we can do that. Okay. So use the reference number and use the page number and then the reference number so we can find it. All right. Floor is open for anybody who wants to get clarity, make a comment. Councilmember Cordova.
I've reviewed this one as well. I feel like it's pretty fair. It's pretty, it stays pretty consistent. For the most part, there are increases. However, I do consider those to be reasonable based on what it's for. I do like the fact that there's actually a suggested reduction in the lead-based paint inspection, so.
Well, hopefully, we don't have that many homes left with lead paint in them. I know there are some because of the number of homes built during that window here, but hopefully, they're tackling it. If there aren't any comments currently, I will open the floor to public comment. If you would like to speak to any of the items that are reference number S dash zero six five through S zero seven nine A, the floor is now open and you may come to the microphone or you may call in at eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. And again, we're talking about housing, reference numbers S zero six five through S zero seven nine A. All right, seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close public comment on this section and either entertain any additional thoughts that have occurred since that public comment or entertain a motion. Councilmember Vega or Ball, who came on first? Somebody make a motion and somebody second.
Are we on page eighteen?
Uh huh, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Number S zero seven nine A, the down, the housing income certification. Am I reading this correctly, what they used to charge and what we're charging now?
They're going to drop the fee from two hundred to one seventy-two. So it's a reduction.
Okay.
All right.
Cool.
Anything else?
No, I'll make a motion.
You to accept the recommendations?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Ball, seconds. All right, let's vote. And that passes five oh. All right. The next section is under public safety and that will be S zero eight zero all the way to S one zero seven, S one zero seven. So. And on our sheets that we're working on, it's page nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Councilmember Cordova.
So on this one, the only one that right, that I, when we were talking about appeals would be the appeal of police issue to council. Is this a fee that we currently have right now?
So this is on page twenty-two. It's S one zero six A. It is not because it's highlighted in yellow that we currently don't have it. The recommended amount is eight seventy. So this is an appeal of a police issue to council.
So the, my only comment on this one would be that this one is very discretionary. A lot of things could affect an issue coming to council with regards to police. I personally would say that we don't add this fee in.
Okay. Any concurrence with that?
I agree with that.
It's on page twenty-two and it's S one zero six A, highlighted in yellow, appeal of police issue to council. And the current recommendation is to not charge as we currently don't.
And I believe these, this would have been in relation to a special business permit, a massage parlor, a taxi, or those types of police decisions. It would have been something related to that.
Does that help with the clarity?
Yeah, no, thank you for the clarity. I think it's important for the public to know and obviously for us to know as we're pondering this or deliberating it. But I think with the consideration that maybe one case per year would come before the council, I just would hate to deter people from their desire if they want to bring something forward to council, especially when it's related to any kind of police issue. They should be able to do that.
Chief, could you provide some clarity? Do you see this being anything other than, say, these permits listed above? Or would this apply to any other type of public safety issue other than the things listed above it?
I think it has a potential to go in many directions.
Okay.
But what we always encourage the public to do is to follow the complaint process internally. Then it can go up to the city manager's level and eventually to the council. So I agree that it isn't originally designed or meant to address somebody who takes issue with us not approving something. But I would, I am a person that likes consistency and I would say if this is one of those fees that is consistent, what we've already talked about tonight, there should probably be something in place to avoid any frivolous jumping and not following current policies and procedures for challenging the police department on an issue.
So you would be comfortable if, if instead of nothing, we did it the same rate that we did for the other appeals?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you for that.
So a quick question, would it make sense to add any verbiage? Because it's, I mean, initially it's pretty vague. It makes it sound like anyone has a police issue or they don't like something, they just come appeal. But it sounds like this was meant to be much more specific, but it's not in here, so.
I think we agree that probably we need a little more specificity.
Okay.
Someone can only appeal something to council if there's a, if there's a process in our code to appeal it. So this would only apply to appeals that are already allowed under our code.
Okay, so the parameters do exist and we wouldn't need to any, add any to this appeal cost?
And I have on page three hundred and twelve of the actual report, the description of the service states processing an appeal of a decision of the police chief to city council.
Okay, okay. All right, so I think for consistency, I would take the chief's recommendation and put it at the same amount as the other appeal processes. Just, you know, and I do know there are, don't we have an application that says if there's a hardship, they can apply to waive fees if there's a hardship? Have we got that? I thought we had that in something. No?
Counsel can waive any fees if they want, right?
Right, and we have the discretion to waive fees if it's, if it's difficult on the individual. I know we've done it in the past for one of the appeals for the ADU, didn't we? Yeah, in the past, okay. So that would be as a way to design consistency for the appeal process. That would be my counter recommendation is to make it the same rate as the other appeals. Councilmember Ball?
I can support that for just consistency.
Any other questions or thoughts on this? All right, so that's the only, the only change. Right now, councilmember Vega and Cordova agreeing not to charge anything. Osborne and Vega see it as at least the same amount as the other appeals. I need a potential tiebreaker or a motion to move this forward. All right, huh? Oh, thank you for reminding me. Public comment. That's, I'm so glad that you're, you're paying attention. I'm trying to get on a sugar high with, with, with the snacks so that I can stay on top of it. Yeah, share the Snickers. Okay, so public comment is now open on the public safety items numbered S zero eight zero all the way through S one oh seven. If you would like to speak to this item, you may come to the podium for three minutes or you may call in at eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. That's why Stacy gets paid the big bucks to keep us on track. Seeing no one rise or call in, we will close public comment and I will bring it back for council discussion and move forward on. I'll make the motion to drop the recommended appeal to two fifty-eight for S one zero six eight. And look for a second on that.
I'll go ahead and give you a second on that.
All right. So now we'll have vote to approve everything, including the change to S one oh, one six oh eight under the public safety section. We're voting. And that passes four one. All right. Okay, the next section is called Leisure and Cultural Services. So Parks and Recs in the old terms, right?
And if I may, these fees are different than all the other fees we're looking at. These are market-based fees. These are fees, people don't have to participate in these programs. And if you set the fee at a level that is too high, more than what people are willing to pay for, they won't come and you'll get less revenue. And so the question that we, we talk about with staff is, do you feel that there's any space in the marketplace to make any changes to these fees? That you would still get the participation with the extra revenues? And staff felt that where they were at, where the fees are at currently, and this would be for all the recreation fees, that they felt that they were at a good place in the market and felt that increase in the fees would push them over and have a negative effect on participation. So there are no changes recommended on any of the fees in this section.
Thank you for that clarity. And I think we worked really hard the last go-round to update some of these. So it's nice to hear that this is one area, we're not making any changes unless council wants to. So it is items S one ten through S one thirty for those following along at home. And here it's on the handout, page twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. We'll open the floor for public comment. If you would like to speak to any of these fees, you are welcome to come to the podium for three minutes or call in at eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one.
Steve Bridge, resident. I haven't memorized that section, but if this has got the section of Dewey Center, I regularly hear from the community that it's too expensive to use. And so while the question I heard was, would we reduce if we raise it, you might in this case want to flip that question around and say, could we get more use out of it if we lowered it?
All right, seeing no one else rise or call in, we will close public comment on that and bring it back for discussion by council. Councilmember Ball?
So to the point of the Dewey Center, where is the line item for that?
So it would be S twenty, one twenty-four, facilities and park rentals on page twenty-six. And when it comes to facility rentals, it depends on the facility as to what the fee is, and it depends on whether you're a for-profit or a nonprofit organization as to the fee. And then it depends on how long you're renting it for. So.
So we don't have that level of detail to make tweaks to any of that in this question, really.
Let's see, the.
On page.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
On the, I don't know even what page it is. In the very beginning of the, my report, I can't tell because it's typed over. I don't know if it's five, I think it's page six. Yes. You'll see, I think we're at fifty percent right now cost recovery on facility and park rentals. It's lumped in with all of our facilities. So, and with the increase that's not included in here to minimum wage, which is all of our staffing that helps us with these facilities, we're probably going to be lower than fifty percent. But most of our fees, we charge what we're being charged. So security. So security, we charge what we're charged and all of that stuff. We haven't had any issue renting it out, so.
Okay, alright. Councilmember Ball, is that all your questions?
I think so. So I guess just one general question, and again, just if it's, if this is what you're saying, there's no changes, right? Just keep it the same, it's a good deal, got enough attendance. But if the question is like, well, if we push it too far, we might lose attendance, is there any section in here where we're not getting enough attendance? Where we might spur attendance or interest in something by, are we really nailing it across the board here?
We, we take a look at our programs probably every season before the active schedule goes out or the, you know, to sign up for new classes and things like that. So if something isn't having great turnout or good attendance, then we do away with it. Again, kind of what Eric was saying, we are market-driven when it comes to recreation programs and, you know, rec facilities and park facilities. So we do that kind of analysis internally. Like we brought back the swap meet because there was a demand for it. So, yeah, we just kind of watch.
So the only other kind of, and I don't know if you have a good answer, anyone else has a good answer for this, but for a community center, if we're talking about other cities, right? Well, they have a community center. Now, we're at 44 whatever percent cost recovery. You and I both know that this is a, this is really up to council to say, well, we want to subsid, we have the money, we want to subsidize 100% or nothing. So again, I would be interested from council, if we're talking about things like senior mills and events and, you know, anything that's helpful to the community. This might be one of those things where we really talk about subsidizing something and change it from just being a conversation about cost recovery, which is what we should do for some of these other things. But we're talking about people and lives and quality of life and those things. So anyway, just throwing it out there.
So we do offer lower rates and things like that. You guys might remember, was it, I always, I still refer to them as CAC Comm Unify?
Comm Unify.
They used to utilize the Dick Dewey Center and we actually figured out a way to subsidize their rent costs through CDBG GRAT. So we always work with people and Mario is wonderful at working with people, especially our nonprofit agencies that are trying to provide senior services at the senior center or our youth center. So, yeah, we always, and when you asked about, to speak to, when you asked about neighboring jurisdictions and the fees they charge, we are like extremely cheap when it comes to our rec programs. Our aquatic center, I mean, we are really low. And then when you mentioned cost recovery or cities' investment in recreation and parks, we are pretty in line with what everybody else invested. I would say the aquatic centers usually are more heavily invested in from the general fund just because they're an expensive facility to run. We do a pretty good job of getting a revenue stream in there and kind of balancing out, not, we don't balance out, but, you know, keeping it down.
And I, to be clear, I do agree that we do quite a bit. We do try to help as much as we can. I did have somebody approach me that said, they, you know, at one time, we used to have a specific type of senior mills program that they do in other cities, but it was, in some little context here, it was cost prohibitive to use the Dewey Center for that. So again, let me get details on that and come back and see if they're being accurate or not. But I just, at the big picture, I want us to always be pushing if we have some resources and it's helpful and we have that and we can use it in discount or, you know, make quality of life better for anyone. I hope we do that, so, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion by council on any of these? Alright, if not, I will entertain a motion to approve this fee structure. Councilmember Cordova?
Motion to approve Leisure and Cultural Services from page 23 to page 26.
So that's S-110 to, yeah. Yeah, yeah, Mr. Bridge got up and spoke. That's okay. We wandered around after that, yeah. And to S-128, so S-110 to S-128. Oh, S-130 actually, page 27, S-130, because of the libraries included under that. Okay, so we've got a motion, I just need a second.
A second.
Alright, councilmember Vega provided a second, let's vote. And that passes 5-0, okay. The next section is Utility Services. So for those of you with the big book, it's S-135 through S-160. So that's pages 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32 of our cheat sheet. Councilmember Starbuck?
Real quick, just on S-143, the request electrical turn off and on. Why such a substantial increase in that fee, you know, $40 to $375? Yeah, granted, it's once a, one a year average, but...
What I can't speak to is how, why it was so low before. We basically have 50 minutes of two people, 25 minutes of two people to turn it off, 25 minutes of two people to turn it back on again, which is how we got to the $375. So I, I don't know if this was something that was consciously subsidized in the past, but I, I don't believe we, we would have had something that cost as, as low as $40 for this service in the past. And apologize, I don't have the previous...
Where'd you get the two people at here?
I'm sorry, in the report itself, in, on page 377 of the report itself?
Yeah, it's, the S-143 is page 377? 377 in the worksheet section?
So there you see the, the electric line workers, 1.67 hours, that's 50 minutes of two people.
I think overall on this particular one, there's a lot of, there's quite a few, I shouldn't say a lot. There is quite a few reductions that I'm seeing. However, the one that comes to my mind, or the one that stands out for me, is the temporary... Where did I see it?
The 138 Temporary Electric Service Install?
Yes.
So it's...
So temporary to...
So it's page 29, S-138?
Yeah, S-138.
Okay.
Why would the temporary cost us so much more versus a permanent electric service install?
And I think a big part of this is that the temporary, you're, you're going kind of back out and back out again. And so that's, yeah, that was a time we had got from staff.
So the, so the underground work, though?
Yeah, we definitely did have more time on the temporary and, and, I'm sorry, I can't speak to the details.
Yeah, so the underground, though, is currently being billed at $325 plus cost of materials and supplies. Here it goes up to $800 plus cost of materials and supplies.
We had, we have three people on the temporary, whereas on the permanent, we had two people.
Would that be because they're potentially running line and the crew has to be a three-person crew instead of a two-person to go out and turn some switches and check to make sure things aren't still live, but they're not removing anything? Potentially?
I, I don't know the answer to that question, I'm wondering if possibly...
Mr. Wilkie? Maybe you can give some clarity?
So, and we're talking about S-138, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, the difference between the current fee and the suggested fee and this, all the temporary, so for the temporary, even off this underground, I wish I had my electric manager here, but he's heading to Sacramento right now. Because even if it's a temporary, the underground may not be what is eventually the final. So we, we either have to abandon it or take it back out.
Okay.
So I think that's probably part of it. And the overtime costs for elect linemen over the last seven years, eight years since we did this study last, has gone up substantially to meet the obligations of keeping staff here because we were losing people to PG&E left and right in Southern Cal Edison. So the rates for each of the linemen and the substation tech has gone up quite a bit to retain those people.
Okay. She was helping, but you had it in your hands. Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, I, when you look at the overall, there's a lot of reduction here, whether you're installing temporary meter or permanent meter and those types of services. So I feel like, I truly feel like it's probably a wash at some point in time when I'm looking at all of these categories, so I'm okay with it.
Well, and, and there aren't that many temporaries that go in place because most people don't want to deal with temporary unless they absolutely have to have it to, while they wait for...
And likely the temporaries, since there are only six that have been looked at, are probably large, large...
Large, yeah.
Projects.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Vega?
S-143 on page 29. Maybe if they could give us a better explanation on what that entails. Is that for all new residential or commercial turn-ons and offs for people? Or what is that, what is that?
Thanks for catching that, I know that councilmember Cordova asked previously. S-143 is the requested electric turn-off and on, it's gone from 40 to 375. Would it be that it's also the cost of who we're sending out and then our rates have gone up in the past seven years, is that...
The, the 375 is based on a minimum two crew
Okay.
at 50 minutes. So it's, these would be requests that come in, for instance, somebody's doing work on their property and they need to have the service shut off for safety purposes, then shut back, then turn back on. So this is then going out to facilitate that, as opposed to somebody being shut off for non-payment, which is the one right above that.
Okay, so this isn't shut off for non-payment. This is literally like for a safety reason or construction or adding on or something like that or completely?
More than likely, yes.
So, if I could, where does it separate? That's your explanation, but where does it say it's not for, for residential turn-ons and offs and whatever?
That's S-142.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I can see that, okay.
Yeah, so delinquents above it, requested is...
So delinquent is also if you get it turned off because you can't pay your bill, is that correct? So it's 375 to turn it back on?
No, the, S-143 is where it's a voluntary request for...
No, I got you, but I'm, I'm talking about S-142.
That's turn on and off if delinquent and it, so it stays, it's going from...
So I'm going back and forth because you mentioned 142 and 143?
Yeah.
So 142 is going from $37 cost to $62 cost, so.
So 142 is the delinquent electric turn on and off?
Yeah, and, and the reason I'm asking, I just wanted a clarification so we can know where we're going here, okay?
Yeah, so one is for delinquent and the others for requested.
So that hasn't changed, is that what, what that says?
So S-142 is increasing to 62, but that's not a huge increase. And then requested is jumping, but it's because that one requires a two-man crew, unlike the delinquent one, which doesn't.
The reconnect fee on delinquents is going from $35 to 50.
Correct, the, the 62 is the unit cost. If you look underneath the current fee and suggested fee columns, that's where it indicates the prior fee and then the new suggested fee.
Yeah, there we go.
So the, to go back to S-143, as the consultant said, we don't know where that number came from as far as $40, but it's been recalculated for a two-man crew to go out. And electric-wise, what I'm saying is, it requires someone physically to go out or is these smart meters or what are they doing? They're just, smart meters just for reading the usage, is that correct? Or are they, are they able to turn them on and off from the office?
So it's, it's more than just shutting the, the meter off. So there, it's more than just flipping the switch on, on it. There, we are working on a AMI system that's going to be replacing our AMR system, which is just basic meter reading, that will allow for remote shut-offs and remote turn-ons. But I don't know if that would be enough for somebody who's doing work on the property.
Yeah, and I guess...
143 is for work on the property, full shutdown.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess, I guess what I'm asking is for, going back to S-142 again, if they were smart meters and they were, had the ability to turn them on and off, it would take two people to push that button, is that correct? Is that a fair question? According to what you're saying with the new upgrade?
The new upgrade will allow for remote shut-offs, but the, pressing the button is not the majority of the work. The majority of the work is trying to get that customer to pay back what they owe.
No, I understand that, I understand what we're doing here.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering about the physical aspects of it, you know, so. We're being asked to go, how many times more than $40? That's quite a bit more. It's not just double, that's like four times, five times, what is that?
It's the cost of a two-man crew for a minimum of 50 minutes.
But it's never been that high.
If I could, I think, I'm scratching my brain, it's been about seven or eight years since we did the last fee research and I believe they set that one pretty low because they didn't want people to try and change their panel with live bolts. And they didn't want them to have live wires. They said, we'll, we'll set the fee low so you guys don't kill yourself.
I don't know that that's a reason to set something that low, because I really...
Hey, that was a great, great one, though, thank you Dean, I appreciate it.
Okay.
No, I, I really seriously think that's the reason why that one was $40 instead of the full burden cost.
I appreciate that.
Oh, stupid question, so by raising it so much, are we killing people?
No.
Yeah, I mean, that's a reasonable...
Jeremy, they didn't want somebody to try and change their panel with live, live wires sticking in there and then, then trying to do it without negotiating.
I get it, my thing is like if it's going to cost somebody $375, maybe they'll just rest the live wires, I don't know.
You'd be surprised.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, I'll throw in real quick on that, I support the Darwin Awards, but I wanted to go to the S-156A here, wastewater appeal processing. Let's standardize that, it's a new fee.
Okay. Okay, councilmember Cordova?
I want to go back to S-142 and S-143. So in either scenario, we're shutting off electric. Whether we're shutting it off because they're delinquent or whether we're shutting it off because someone is doing some kind of work and they're requesting it to be shut off.
It's either shutting them off or turning them back on. If, if somebody's being turned back on because they've, for whatever reason, they've been turned off for delinquency, that turn-on fee is the same. So we try to encourage people to pay their bills so they don't get shut off.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is that if someone calls and who's not gone delinquent and they just are requesting for the service to be shut off because they're doing some upgrade to their house or whatever the case is, they're paying $375. They should just go delinquent because then they're only going to have to pay 50 bucks.
No, they're going to have to pay a lot more than 50 bucks, they're going to pay their back pay.
According to this, I mean, I just think that you're shutting it off on either one, on either scenario, S-142 or S-143.
Well, councilmember Cordova, on 140...
Well, Councilmember Cordova, on 140, the delinquent, is that the one you're referring to? There's a lot more detail in there that there's a cut lock, a final read. There's a lot more staff time that goes into that. S-144?
No, 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 so S-142 is stating...
Sorry, I was looking at 144.
Same termination letter, $30. Reconnection, $30.
Right, right, so, so, so it's for, and it's, the smart meter is turned off. The power isn't actually turned off as far as ending service so that it's not a live wire. It's just the meter's turned off and they can't take the power from, from the street into the house. Whereas the requested electric turn-off, as I understand it, is they stop the power, completely going into all of the property so they can do whatever work.
Which requires a two-man crew to do that.
Which requires a two-man crew. So, that is very different.
Right, and now, now that you've said that, I understand that. But couldn't you do the same thing by just switching off the, the smart meter?
If we have to send out a two-man crew to do this, and this all happened before I got here...
But when you, but when you turn it off...
They are doing more than just shutting off the smart meter.
No, I understand, but couldn't we provide them the same service by just shutting off the, the, the smart meter so that the power's not going into there?
Otherwise, we wouldn't need to send two people out there to, to make sure it's safely off.
Yeah, they're two very different actions.
No, I know they are. But if we can shut off power to someone that hasn't paid us by pushing a button on a meter, why couldn't we do the same for someone that's saying, "Hey, can you halt my service because I'm, I need to do some..."
So, we don't have any of those meters right now? So, what we do right now is send a meter tech to do the shut-off.
Which means you're doing that also to delinquent people. So, you don't have a smart meter.
But, but, but you're seeing, so it's two different service technicians.
If you wanted to turn your power off, you could just go to the main breaker and turn the power off to the whole house.
That's true. But if you need the power completely shut off because of whatever's being done on the property, needs it not to be live, that's the request. If you're delinquent, they send a different tech out who locks the meter.
Listen, I understand that. I've done this before, I understand it. I just think that maybe then you need to specify it just a little different as we have done in some other ones. Because to me, it seems like the same thing, but you get a break if you go delinquent. And if you're someone that's doing an upgrade, you get slammed with $375.
Is it 375 to turn it on and then, or to turn it off and then 375 to turn it back on?
No, it's one fee to have them come out and turn it off.
And back on.
And then when you're ready for it to come back out, they go back out and turn it back on, all for the 375.
Got it, okay.
Okay, all right. Any other questions before we go to public comment? See, I'm remembering now. Okay, we will go to public comment on this item. If you would like to speak to it, you may come to the podium for your three minutes or you may call in for 805-875-8201. We are currently discussing utility fees. And that is S-135 through S-160. All right, seeing no one rise and no one call in, we'll bring it back. Currently, the only recommended change has been for S-156A, the wastewater appeal process, for the fee to be the same as the other appeal fees. No other changes are currently recommended unless somebody changes their mind. If there's no other recommended changes, I will entertain a motion. Although everyone seems to be very studiously reviewing.
I'll make a motion for the, let's see, let me get my numbers right. Are we starting at S-135 through S-160? With the listed changes, if any?
Okay, I will give you a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 3-2. Okay, all right. The last set of pages are items S-161 through S-173. This is admin costs. Any questions? Councilmember Cordova?
What is a bid award protest review fee?
I didn't get the bid and I'm pissed. I thought I should have got the bid.
S-173.
Yeah, I thought I should have got the bid and I didn't, you know, Public Works job. And I didn't, and I, I think that there's something, something going on. You guys didn't look at something, that's what that is.
Got it.
I have a quick question about the public gathering permit. I know it's just probably something that hardly happens, but it's, it's going to get way more expensive to get together. Maybe we can talk about that one?
Especially if you're a nonprofit.
So, is the nonprofit waive, waiving of that going away?
Proposing that everybody pay the 415, including nonprofits.
So, who does this apply to? When we say public gathering permit, who would be lining up for this type of permit?
A special event. Trying, I'm drawing a blank, chief. A march, thank you. Parade?
Yeah, because parade causes street shutdown, whereas a march doesn't always, right?
Usually, so those permits come to the clerk's office. And mostly what I receive are items for individuals who want to have a gathering. We've had them here at City Hall for National Day of Prayer. We have some religious groups that like to gather at Pine and H. And we've had zombie walks. So, there are some that are very easy, but there are some that are complicated, such as a zombie walk is a little more complicated than a National Day of Prayer. But they all include a review by the police. We just want to make sure that everybody is informed of something that is happening inside the city, okay?
So, I guess, if I may, to that point, we were kind of lopping everything as a one-and-done fee when we're hearing that there is a wide range of something simple to something very complicated. So, again, I'm hearing this that, you know, it used to be zero or, you know, a small fee for the National Day of Prayer, but we're going to charge 400 bucks for that now. And it's like, well, that's up to us to decide where and how we substitute. So, we're making it more expensive to gather in public, which to me means it becomes prohibitive to do that. And I kind of disagree with that approach.
So, what would your recommendation be?
Encourage people to get together. And if there is some complication, Stacy makes a good point, some of these are complicated. Maybe there's a couple different tiers of this type of thing. But again, if a group is saying, "Oh, my gosh, it's 400 bucks to do that, it's not worth it." And again, we're losing that cultural quality, maybe experience in town. I don't know, just something to think about.
Would you be comfortable if the fee remained 105, but everyone pays the 105 instead of...
Well, maybe I'll wait for public comment. I would just say, again, a nonprofit's going from zero cost to 105. And it doesn't seem like much, but I don't know if that, if that's palatable, great, but, yeah. I'm open to whatever council decides.
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm just asking for feedback. Again, pointing out something you disagree with is totally understandable, but in the process, I also like to hear what a possible solution might be. Councilmember Vega?
On number S-163, I kind of like to leave that fee the same and leave nonprofit with no charge. Most people don't want to say anything. I know we're here to increase fees or modify the fees, but I think, I hate to make it so prohibitive that people are going to just gather anyway and get in trouble. I think that it would be nice. We know as you use that National Day of Prayer, yes, they may be a nonprofit or maybe not in front of City Hall. But I hate to see someone be charged $415 just to gather in front of City Hall, so... I kind of propose we leave the fee and the same with the nonprofit with no charge for the public gathering.
Okay. Councilmember Cordova?
I would agree with that.
Okay, all right. Any, oh, here comes our police chief to give some input.
You know, I agree with some of the events that we have. By nature, they're not a problem. But we have had some situations recently where they're having events, they're not paying fees. I'm having to send a sergeant out to the location multiple times to identify what the issue is, taking him from his normal job of doing CCWs, different other things, to task him with figuring out what's going on, why is this an issue, and is it safe for people to be there? So, I would encourage you to think about that when you make this decision. And if, if many of these, in this one situation, they were charging a fee for people to go into that location. So, they're making money. They can cover those fees, but they're choosing not to. So, and just share that with you.
Councilmember Cordova?
So, I guess if, if they're charging, is there a way for us, city attorney, to break it up to where if they're charging to, to gather people, then they should be paying a fee, a larger fee? Or a fee, you know, because then that could be considered here?
There is, but we would have to change our ordinance to make two different types of public gathering permits. One for people who are charging for the event and then one for people who are not. And then we'd have different fees for each of those. The public, so we can do that, but we'd have to bring back an amendment to the ordinance, the public gathering permit ordinance to do that. Right now, under our code, we just have one public gathering permit. And we are deciding what the fee should be for that one public gathering permit.
So, I might suggest that maybe we need to look at that because a nonprofit who's not charging, I'm assuming if they're a nonprofit, then they're not charging people to, to attend. Like, let's say, we're just using National Day of Prayer as one, but that's, you know, but, but that could not necessarily be true. And so, that's why I think that maybe we should differentiate then. If you're charging people to get in, then that means that you should be paying a fee to the city. If you're doing it for the purpose of, you know, free gathering, then that's where, you know, we shouldn't prohibit people necessarily. And if people aren't paying fees and they're getting together, then they're breaking Lompoc Municipal Code anyway because they should be getting a permit. So, they should be fined if they're, if they're holding, you know, something that they shouldn't be holding without a proper permit.
So, this could be one of those items, like we're doing the stormwater, where we pulled it out and did a separate conversation about public gatherings and our ordinance and maybe take a deeper dive because things have changed since this public gathering ordinance was probably put in place decades ago, is what I'm assuming? Because I know we also had a conversation about dance permit, dance hall and carnival permits and...
I assume that that is true with this one.
Okay, so there's a potential solution of pulling S-163 for a future discussion and, and specific update to the ordinance and, and fees. So, that's a potential solution. Any other questions before we go to public comment?
Mayor, I need to clarify one item on S-169. That information has changed, and I did not catch it during the review of the fees. The current fees are being charged for the other. The 3.75% is being charged for non-utility bills. Online utility charge, that 3% of the amount charged is not being charged. I, I, at this time, would want to suggest that we continue the way that we have been, which would have our other, well, the way that we are right now, which is that we're charging that 3.75% of the amount charged and that we still do not charge to the utility billing customers. Because, twofold. One, there, we get a lot of people who pay their bills online. And I, I want to make it easy for people to pay their bill. The, the other piece is that there are specific rules related to what the banks can charge us for utility bill, bills. And I would have to do more research on that to verify this 3%.
Okay, so leave it at the current structure and strike the suggested.
And, and just also to know that the current fee with this, this statement that says these fees are not currently being charged only applies to the online utility charge.
Online, okay. So, only online is not charged. Needs to be put in there and strike the suggested fee change for S-169.
So, just to clarify, so essentially keeping it the same?
Keeping it the same, but putting the clarifying language in.
So, just out of curiosity, that's a big revenue number on that green box there. So, how does that adjust all of our projections?
It would go down, but I couldn't tell you how much. I don't know.
Not that that's, it should matter a little bit, but I'm just curious.
I think the thing that Christie is talking about, she needs to research. There's different agreements with the merchants with Visa, MasterCard, that if we process a utility bill, we get a much, much lower rate. So, those numbers might not be completely accurate based upon those merchant agreements. But that's something that she's talking about, she'd have to research.
And I also would need to go back into the, this study and, and maybe Eric can answer this, I'm not sure, that the, the numbers here for the revenue, I think those are being calculated on both not being collected currently. Is that, is that, right. And so, we, we would still be recognizing some of that revenue because we had, it was calculated as if we hadn't been charging the 3.75, but we are charging that 3.75 right now.
Okay, makes sense, thank you.
Any, Councilmember Vega?
Christie, I have a question for you. You talked about the paying for utilities online and charging the 3% for people that pay online?
We don't charge anything right now for customers that pay online.
But you mentioned that you were charging it for online payments, correct?
No, no.
You didn't, because I heard you say two things, okay?
So, so, no, we are pay, we are charging 3.75% to process non-utility payments over the phone or at the counter. Any of the payments that are made online do not have that 3.75 charge.
But the 3% that you have there, we're deleting that, is that correct? Is that what you're suggesting?
I, I'm suggesting that that be deleted off of the study.
Off the study, because it's on the study incorrectly.
It's currently 0% for, and keeping it 0%.
I just wanted to clarify because if it was 3%, would it be on all charges? But we're just not even going to talk about it because we're, we're going to take that off the study, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's a big snafu, though, I had to ask.
So, let me clarify for some, because somebody out in the community I know is going to be confused. Oh, should I pay my bill online? Do I get charged more? Can we just lay it out, what are we suggesting?
All utility bills are waived credit card processing fees.
So, we're encouraging, we would love for people to pay their bill online, is what we're...
Absolutely, please pay your bill online.
And we're not going to charge you an extra, extra fee?
No, no extra fees for utility bills online. Or, or if, or paid in person with credit cards.
Even if you paid in person. The only, the only fee being charged is 3.75 for anything that's not a utility payment.
A building project, a planning application.
If you pay any of those with a credit card, it gets...
And the reason why we charge that is because we can't mark that up. So, we have to recoup our costs somewhere.
Okay. Any more clarity on that one? Okay, we'll go to public comment on this. If you would like to speak to items S-161 through S-713, you may come to the podium for your three minutes or you may call in at 805-875-8201. All right, seeing no one rise and no one call in, we'll close public comment on this item and bring it back. So, we are pulling S-163 for a future discussion and potentially restructuring our public gathering ordinance. gathering ordinance and fee structure. So S-163 will not be in this.
Well, we're still going to have the permit in the meantime, so we need to know what fee to charge for that permit.
Shall, shall we leave it as is until we, okay.
Yes, leave it as is.
I've got, leave it as is until we have the ordinance brought back and a discussion on a different fee structure. Thank you for catching that. And we are striking the online utility charge of 3% of the amount charged from S-169 and not making any changes. Okay, those are the only things we've discussed. Anything else? Councilmember Ball.
I'll make a motion to accept those.
Okay.
S-161 through S-173 with the listed changes.
Okay.
Second.
And Councilmember Vega has seconded. Any questions or clarity from, okay, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. Now we need a single motion that says we accept all of the recommended changes and the resolution. Can I get that? Councilmember Starbuck.
I was going to make a couple of comments real quick.
Sure.
I guess in here, the big question is who benefits the most from this, the citizens or City Hall? I'm still tossing that in my head right now. I'm going to go with these additional costs. I feel like it is a stifling of business in a sense. I heard Councilwoman Cordova say no and all, but then we had a lady show up at public comment. These little things do add up in the small business world. I, fees, permits, impact fees, et cetera, et cetera. We're talking about 1.3 million of increases here, basically slightly less now. Expected revenues here, when you increase these fees, underground things start happening. People try and do things without paying. You know, when you're trying to make an extra 1.3 million annually and for five years, it, it's a lot of money. The, the one thing that I, I kind of wanted to read here is, is, you know, the, the fees versus wages. 1.3 million would cover a lot of wages. So how do we break down? If we're gathering all these fees, we should have a surplus of general fund after this. There was a consultant a few years ago, looked like this guy right here. He gave us a book, and it says, "100% of the time of all city employees was distributed." In other words, everyone had to be someplace all of their time. No judgments were made about what personnel should or might be doing. Their time was distributed to those service centers where that time was expended. So we have wages. During the budget, we go ahead and we fund the position, and we've done it without fees. Now we're going to have an influx of fees. Is there going to be a return in the general fund? Is it going to go to future wages? Is it going to do anything for the betterment of the taxpayer? I don't know. These fees far exceed the inflation CPI in the last five years. It's a toss-up for me. I guess the only thing I can do at this point is go with my heart and say, "Thank you taxpayers, because it's coming again."
Councilmember Ball.
So I, I certainly respect that, that point of view, and it's always awkward and inconvenient to raise a fee on anyone. I guess my question, to bring it back, to give us a little bit of context, is with all of these fees increasing, is the city of Lompoc cheaper to do business than, than Santa Maria and Santa Barbara, or is it more expensive, generally speaking? I know it's a little bit of a loaded question, but I think I know the answer. Curious to hear a response.
Are you asking me, because you're looking at me?
I'm asking anyone that's smart enough to answer that question.
I haven't done a comparison of our permit fees, but the last time I checked, we were cheaper. But, I mean, I'm always happy to run an analysis and compare again.
So I appreciate that. I'm going to get, I'm going to double down on the person, we hopefully spent some good money to get his expertise. What's your opinion on this?
Yeah, I did the same study for the city of Santa Barbara Community Development Department, and their fees are much, much higher, much higher.
We have any reference in Santa Maria? I think they're, I think from my understanding, they're a little bit higher as well.
We did a study for Santa Maria also, but I, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer.
Unless somebody can prove that I'm wrong, I still, with these increases, it's cheaper to do business in the city of Lompoc. That said, I still feel it's on the city and staff, and we all have to work together to make the process with the staff we have and the challenges we have to be as efficient as we can to stay competitive. If the fees are higher in Santa Maria, they've been building like crazy, so that's not necessarily a fair argument to say elevated fees means no growth. There's other challenges for Lompoc, demographics, our borders, et cetera. So, anyway, I just, I, I, I think for us to have a fair understanding of this, it's, it's hard to raise fees, but where we align with our neighbors is important to be a part of that discussion. And I'm, although I'm not happy to have to do all of these things, I, I appreciate council having the thoughtfulness to take their time and to go through this, at least at this level of detail so far. So I would, I would support this as is right now.
Jeremy, if I could, I'd just like to make a quick comment based upon what you said. I think, like Eric said, a lot of times our fees are a lot lower, and it comes down to what you said earlier. I really feel that our staff are very efficient, and they do things, they do a lot of things, and they do them pretty quickly, and they do a very good job. So our timestamps are usually a little lower, and our costs are lower because we, our comps are lower. So, I mean, comparative to other cities, I think that you're going to see that Lompoc is very efficient and very cost-effective, so.
I appreciate that. Let me ask you a loaded question. Do you still think there's room for improvement?
There's, there's always room for improvement.
Perfect.
Councilmember Cordova.
I just will say that I think it's, I, I do think it's unreasonable. I'm not a fan of increasing fees or any, or anything like that. I understand the, the, the hard working class community that we are. However, I think it's unreasonable to think that we are going to keep our fees the same when the cost of doing that business continuously goes up in California. And yes, you might say that, oh, there should be a surplus, but let's not forget that prior to COVID, we were in a deficit. So it, it, it really is not reasonable for us to say that, that not raising the fees when, when we literally have handed out raises, even through COVID, we were able to find a way to do that, to pay increases. And, and aside from the city of, or the state of California, having these wage increase demands that keep coming every year, I, I think it's reasonable. I think we looked at everything reasonably. I don't think it's fair to tell the public that we should then have a surplus, and they should not be expecting, I mean, it's not a good thing ever, but I do think that it's something that is, needed to be reviewed, and, and that's just, that unfortunately we're tasked with that hard job.
Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, the fee studies, as we know, are part of life. All we're looking for is to have some return to the community. So City Hall has services they have to provide, but I think that what happens in the political world, we take the path of least resistance. That's why tonight I said, hey, some accountability on where the money goes and gets spent is one of our things, not just thanking people for doing their job. Yes, we have great people here, and we have a great staff, but it works twofold. It's kind of like you can't just go one-sided. Yes, it's job security for one end, to make sure you have the services, but the community in general is, a lot of people in small business are not doing that well. And it's been tough. It's been tough. So if you go down the, the streets and you talk to people, you know, it's not just fees. Fees don't make you successful. Fees get you in the door. They get your light, keep your lights on. But it doesn't make you successful here in Lompoc. And it's tough. You have to really work hard. So I have to give a lot of comment, kudos to the small business owners and the people here that are trying to make ends meet, because I can tell you, the small business people are not just working eight hours. They're working a lot just to pay, and they can't close. Most of those people that are, are working, they have to keep working to keep the money coming in so they can keep those bills, because they're not really profiting that well. They're just paying their bills, so that's all I want. I want the city to do well, and I want all of us to be a part of the process to make it positive here for people to want to come here and see some sort of success at the end of the day. You know, most people, you don't want to open your business and open your doors just so you can fail three months later or six months later. That's not what we want. We want people to thrive. So anyway, just wanted the public to know that we are here to make, make sure City Hall is solvent. We have some great people here. I just want to make sure they see some of the benefits of what we're doing.
Councilmember Cordova.
And maybe, you know, to, to Councilmember Vega's point, maybe we should be, and, and for the lady that stood up today and said, you know, I'm a small business, I'm struggling. She was, she was, you know, shaken up even being at the podium. Maybe we, we do need to look at that separately, because we're charging a fee, let's say one particular fee, whether you're building, you know, something big, or whether you're putting something that's a mom and pop operation, and people are paying the same fee. So maybe we need to be looking at setting aside in our budget some level of small business incentives for if you have this many employees or less, or if your operation is this square footage or less. Maybe we need to be looking at that, and that is a serious conversation that we should be having, because a lot of what the business in Lompoc is, is small business, and we really should be helping them and figuring out a way of how we can get them to be successful, without just tossing them to the Chamber of Commerce, because we know the Chamber of Commerce doesn't have money to help them.
I'll give you a second.
I'd give you a third. I mean, that's why we had economic development, and we had money, and we were giving out grants, and we were funding those things, but we funded the chamber with that fund, and as a result, don't have any money left. So if, if by any chance, Councilmember Starbuck is correct, and there is a surplus that results from these fees, it is a potential that we can have that discussion, and maybe there's a way to start identifying, setting the funds aside for that kind of thing, because we haven't prioritized assisting small businesses since we eliminated the Economic Development Department. Okay, once again, since we need it to move forward, I will make a motion to close the public hearing and accept the amended master fee study report and adopt Resolution 6620 Princees 22, updating the schedule of fees and charges for the city. And I look for a second. Councilmember Ball.
All right, second.
All right, let's vote. And that passes for one. All right. Any written communications on any other matters?
No, ma'am, nothing.
None, thank you. All right, this is your final opportunity for oral communication on city-related matters. If you would like to speak, you may come to the podium for two minutes, or you might call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if anyone calls in, I will just thank my fellow councilmembers for the robust conversation on such a difficult topic, and remind the public that we have a special meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 PM here in the chambers regarding the Pell Blue Dot proposal and the analysis by our independent consultants for the public to hear and council to ask questions as the consultant will be present. Seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close the final oral communication of the evening, and I will bring it back to council. Councilmember Cordova, anything to report?
No reports.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilmember Ball.
No reports, just a reminder, tomorrow morning, I look forward to hopefully seeing a few of you at Ryan Park at 9:30 AM for the ribbon cutting. I, myself and my son have already been there three or four times to play, love the playground, excited to see the pickleball stuff. Anyway, tomorrow morning, 9:30, come out and check it out, it's beautiful.
Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to say thanks for everybody that showed up for this Children's Christmas Parade, it was really good. Thanks, Dean, thanks to the rest of the council. I actually showed up, and it was fun. There was a lot of people. So I just, it was nice to see all the people come out of Lompoc waving, so, thank you.
All right, a quick report. I had the Northern California Power Agency Legislative and Regulatory Executive and Regular Meeting last week. I attended the ECON Alliance Future Forum with Councilmember Cordova and our city manager, Dean. It was their 10th anniversary, and all the elected, local elected leaders attended. I attended the elected leaders forum to address homelessness. It is a public meeting and the agendas and the presentation are online at the county website, if anyone's interested. I represented the city at the Vandenberg Space Force Base Holiday Social, and I, along with Councilmember Cordova, attended Futures Customer Service Readiness Academy last night graduation. And I just, again, want to say how proud we are of those high school students who are putting in the extra work and learning skills to make them better human beings. All right, my final is a thanks to not only Dean for constructing an amazing Christmas tree and getting all those lights on it, but to our admin team for the additional decorations and for walking in the parade with us, even if Dean drove a little too fast at some points, and they had to run to catch up. And to all the council that were able to make it out. It was an amazing evening, the weather held out, and the lights worked on the tree, and it was wonderful to have Centennial Park looking so great, along with all the Christmas decorations. And as I watched the kids run around while they waited for Santa to arrive, I was very relieved to know none of them were going to fall into a gopher hole or slip on the dirt. And so it made me quite proud of all the work we've managed to accomplish over this past year, and to see all of the community out, not just the single row along the curb, but on the sidewalk and in the park and lots, and kind of having tailgate parties, and just seeing everybody out and about. So I want to encourage everybody to keep the holiday spirit up all year round. Come out tomorrow meeting for the Pell Blue Dot discussion, and then for our final meeting of the year on December 19th, which we will adjourn to at 6:30 PM, December 19th, 2023. Thank you.